Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, excuse me, will please come to order with the clerk, please call the rolls so that we might establish a form.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Chenier, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Carr, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here. I'll rise, please. I'd ask Councilmember Chenier to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Good afternoon to everyone. We have four, actually five items to take up this evening, and let us move through them if we might. Let's begin with item number one. Who is presenting on item one? Is this a controversial item or one that Councilmember Ashby, you want to take the lead here?
It is a public hearing. Sure, Mayor.
It's a public hearing?
Yeah, I believe...
Go ahead.
I believe it is set for a public hearing. I'm not sure if you have anything that you need to read into the record. Do you? No. Okay. And there are no speakers signed up? All right. Then I would open and close the public hearing and move the item, Mayor.
Very good. That's been moved and seconded with the open and closure of the public hearing. I know the staff works very hard on these things, and the lack of mic time does not reflect our lack of appreciation for what it takes to get here. So, thank you very much. Okay. No public testimony, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. Very good. Let's move to item two then. Same thing. This is, whose district is this? This is Councilman Hanson's district. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Sean DeCoursey, Associate Preservation Planner with the Community Development Department, and I'm pleased to present a landmark nomination for 1121 Swanston Drive in the Land Park Neighborhood. This building is an excellent example of an Art Modane-style residence, which the Preservation Commission has recommended makes the property eligible for listing in the Sacramento Register under Criteria III, since it embodies the distinctive characteristics of an important period in the city's architectural history. The owner of the property retained a professional historian to document the property's significance, and staff has received one letter of support from Preservation Sacramento. Staff recommends the City Council pass an ordinance listing 1121 Swanston Drive on the Sacramento Register as a historic landmark. This completes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there any, Councilman Hanson, anything on this? Go ahead.
I don't think we have any public comment, Mayor. I would just open and close the public hearing and make a motion to approve the nomination.
Very good. Moved and seconded, no public testimony, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. That passes unanimously. Item three, the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan.
Mayor, I'm not sure if anything needs to be read into the record, and I in fact don't see Cheryl. Oh, there she is. Cheryl, do you need to read anything to the record? Okay. Then, Mayor, and are there any speakers signed up for this item? I am happy, this is a routine issue that happens every year for the basin conservancy, their habitat conservation fees. It has been well-vetted by staff. I am happy to open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. That passes unanimously. File item four, Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to make sure, as Assistant City Manager, do we need to read one item into the record here? I think we need one item to be read into the record here.
Yeah, and I think our cannabis...
And what I'd like, before that happens, I do want to thank our staff and our fire marshal. This item has been before the Law and Legislation Committee on multiple occasions, and now I think we are at an optimal point of moving forward to make sure that we continue to increase the manufacturing opportunities there are in the industrial area. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And with that, I'm going to move to open and close the public hearing, but something needs to be read into the record.
Assistant Mayor, are you going to read into the... No. Go ahead. Yes, please. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Davina Smith. I'm from the Office of Cannabis Management, and tonight you are talking about volatile manufacturing and if your council wishes to allow it. At this time, we do have a recommended change that we'd like to make to the published ordinance. I have copies to hand out. So, one amendment to the proposed ordinance as published was suggested by Mayor Protam Ashby and is supported by the Fire Chief. It adds Section 17.228.900E3, and this is that language. I'll wait a second until you all get it. Sorry. So, that first proposed amendment is to add, as I said, Section 17.228.900E3. That's on page two of the handout you were given, and that language would read, "If the proposed cannabis production includes cannabis manufacturing," which should say "volatile manufacturing," "the Fire Chief or designee has determined that the proposed volatile manufacturing use is compatible with surrounding uses." The second proposed amendment, and that would be on page three of your handout, and this was proposed by staff, is that cannabis extraction must be performed in a manner that will not create explosive or ignitable mixtures, as approved by the Fire Chief or designee, and that section is 17.228.900F6.
So, that has been read into the record. Is that, Councilmember Geta?
It's been moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. We do have two members, one to... We do have public testimony. We have four public speakers. Let's take the four. Councilmember Chenier, you want to speak now?
No, I'll speak after, but I'm just, is the motion include these changes?
Yes, the motion includes the changes that were just read into the record.
The only thing that was read into the record that was proposed by staff was the item on page six. Yeah, item six on page three, sorry. Item three, I think, is something that Councilmember Ashby is proposing.
It's also recommended by staff. Both items are recommended by staff.
Okay. Is that, are we all on the same page there? Okay. So then, let's hear the public testimony from the four speakers, and we'll hear from the remaining council members.
Actually, I have five speakers. The first is Randy Naught, Tracy Stevens, then Alicia Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the City Council. Long time, no see. I am here representing the Francis Key Project. We have a facility at 8655 Younger Creek Road. It's a 36,000-square-foot facility, originally designed within the city's guidelines solely for non-volatile manufacturing. We are currently under construction. We are very much in favor, including the changes read into the record of this ordinance, and I'm very impressed with the work that the Fire Department did with our industry, and just want to say thank you for this.
Next speaker is Tracy Stevens, then Alicia Garcia.
Tracy Stevens here on behalf of Natura. We're in strong support, but I'm just here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Alicia Garcia, then Macworthy.
Ms. Garcia? Alicia, here you go. It's okay. Take your time.
Hi, Mayor, and City Council members. I am Alicia Garcia. I'm a Cannabis Equity Program graduate, and I'm an active UCA member as well. It is my first City Hall meeting today, so I'm just trying to get a feel about how things go, and I'm trying to be more active in my community and more in the City Hall members and the City Hall meetings.
Go ahead.
So, I just wanted to come here just to introduce myself and who I represent. So, I want to thank you guys for the Cannabis Equity Program, and I also want to be here and be more active and everything and kind of have a voice. So, I just wanted to introduce myself to the council, and I will be more involved and be seeing you guys a lot more, too.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it, Mr. Worthy.
Next speaker is Macworthy, and then our final speaker is Mindy Galloway.
I'm still concerned of amendments. You got a cannabis on over near the Safeway. Boogie, and you still amend it. You still amend it. See, if you done this to the Constitution of the United States, we'll be at war. The people ain't transparent or nothing. Who know what you putting in? How does it affect the ones that's going? So, it's all right. You said you give the minorities, the people of color, a million dollars. Where's that money? Not a one that we can identify that's selling nothing. So, what was the hangup? Policy, policy, policy. Somebody said the last time, here that one with O'Ford and Fair. Do you know what you doing? People at O'Ford and Fair? You gonna tell a boy he can buy it and can't light up? You gonna have a war over there. So, quit lying to the people about these type of things. Tell them the truth, people. Put this thing in perspective and let them know that. I got nephews in New York keep calling me, what's going on with cannabis? If you're gonna come this way, go to Colorado, because California is up shit creek with cannabis. It ain't gonna go, people. It not gonna go. You have killed too many people already, and you're still making policies and tax, raising taxes. All you do is policy and raise tax. Everywhere except property tax, because Jarvis Yan control that. But you are creating a risky thing here of over appraising property. And people, you can go down to raise money, go down to the bank and ask them to give you equity loan, and see what they're gonna tell you. See what they're gonna tell you. And then, if we get a private sector in here, we can raise the money, become independent, people, economically independent. People of color, you can do that by investing your money.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our last speaker is Mindy Galloway on this item.
Ms. Galloway.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Mindy Galloway. I'm CEO of Camia Manufacturing and a Core graduate. I just wanted to thank you for considering to open up a safe, controlled environment for volatile manufacturing in the city of Sacramento. I have toured many manufacturing sites in other cities, enclosed cities, Woodland, Davis, and have been very impressed with the level of technology that is available today, and I'm glad and happy that you are considering bringing this to Sacramento as a manufacturer. It'll be very helpful for me to work with other manufacturers in my local area and support other companies in Sacramento rather than going to different cities for collaboration. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. That completes the public testimony. Let me turn it to Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. I previously have not supported this item because volatile extraction makes me nervous and because done unprofessionally or irresponsibly creates a danger to everyone around it. So, I appreciate that staff has put together a proposal here that works with the Fire Department and particularly the Fire Marshal to control that process and keep people in Sacramento safe and still allow the industry to move forward in this regard. I also feel I can support it with the two amendments referenced by staff already, and I want to thank Randy and the other members of the professional community that are here today supporting both of those amendments to the proposal. Thank you for being here, and thank you for always trying to help us find that balance between keeping people safe and moving an industry forward. And then, Chad, would you come forward for just a second, Chief Augustine? I just want to take one second to reference this conversation because my name's been thrown around a little bit with this modification, but really, the suggestion came from a conversation with you, and I'd love for you just to speak to it for just a moment, if you would.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Really, our concern came from not the large commercial buildings in heavy industrial that are permitted and regulated and inspected, but more are smaller businesses, maybe in the downtown, midtown, that are either illegally or operating without permitted or inspections, or those that may be relatively close to other businesses outside of just schools and light rails. And so, I think in general, this is a really good compromise where we're promoting business, promoting industry, but if there's something that falls slightly out of the norm, it allows everybody, all the stakeholders together, to look at it and decide if this is an ideal spot or not, based on a critical safety issue.
Yeah, I really appreciated the Fire Department's perspective on this. Obviously, if there is an explosion, it is the Fire Department that arrives on the scene and has to deal with it. So, I think what this allows us to do is move forward with a critical component of the industry, allow that to happen, and the Fire Marshal to work through that process happening appropriately, and then eliminates the folks who are doing it illegally, or if, for example, somebody happened to be next door to the Storage Center for TNT fireworks, that might not be a great compatible use right next to each other, but it allows the Fire Department to have that little bit of extra discretion, which gives me a level of comfort that I can say to my constituents, that we're doing everything in our powers policymakers to make sure that while we move the industry forward, we're also safe and adhering to best practices. So, I just want to thank you, Deputy Chief.
Absolutely. Happy to help. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Chenier.
I don't know if it's the Fire Chief or Chad, if you want to come back up. I just want to follow up on a couple of things. You're just quick. So, part of the reasoning, what I just heard, is when there are illegal ones, but if it's illegal, we should be shutting it down, correct?
Absolutely.
So, this ordinance really wouldn't impact, it shouldn't impact anyone doing illegal manufacturing.
That's correct.
Okay. So, that issue is, that's an enforcement issue? It's not an ordinance issue?
Right. And I think what I was trying to reference was that in the highly industrial areas where they're permitted, inspected, they're sprinkled, we have a level of oversight and safety on those. It's the ones that are operating out of a residential that are doing illegal things in their kitchens or retrofitting.
But again, this doesn't impact that. If you guys know where something illegal is, that's a call to the police chief to shut it down.
Absolutely. And I'm not saying that we would not utilize every available resource we have if we had notification of something illegal. The other thing on the commercial is just being able to look at who your neighbors are and making sure that there's a level of safety, even if, as an example, if you have a business that has a small daycare that is within a perimeter of a business that's using volatiles, that might be a safety issue that we would want to look at.
You still need a conditional use permit for the business, correct?
That's correct.
So, someone is, if someone wants to set up a manufacturing next to Pop Gun fireworks, they're probably not going to get it because they're gonna, it's going to require a CUP that we have to go through.
That's correct.
I guess my piece on this is I'm not sure why we need this. I'm going to defer to Mr. Guerra, because I know he's been working with this with a lot of folks in his district who want to do this, and I know that there's a revenue aspect to this for the city as well. I guess my final question, this has been to Law &amp; Ledge twice, it's been to the council once, which unfortunately I wasn't here, but I'm wondering why this never came up before.
Yeah, I can't answer that. What I would say is that anytime we're taking steps forward on something like the use of volatiles, even though it can be used safely and successfully, it is nice to be able to have one additional failsafe to look and to say, you know what, this might fall within the general parameters of a conditional use permit, but we weren't able to look at this other area that, outside of the conditional use permit, makes it not an ideal location.
Okay. Well, I would ask our cannabis folks to look at our CUP guidelines, and if we're missing something on this, then we should add that in as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Geta.
Don't move yet, Chad. Okay. Because I want to go back at this. Are you aware of the illegal butane ordinance?
Which part?
The fact that it's illegal to manufacture in a residential area without a conditional use permit?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, why would we need this section if it's already illegal, and we actually already passed an ordinance here that you guys came and supported for an additional level of bureaucracy, given the information you just put forward?
Yeah. I think what I was trying to reference in, when I was talking about the area, the things that keep me up at night are not on our heavy industrial areas that are permitted and inspected. It's the volatile extraction that's being done illegally that we don't know about.
And manufacturing is done in the industrial area? Manufacturing is done in the industrial area? That's where their focus is at?
For the legal use?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And this particular requirement is for those who are going through the legal process?
That's correct.
So, I guess I wonder why you're conflating the issue between those who are going through the legal process and not. The next question I have here is, you say surrounding uses. So, now are we deferring the Fire Department to engage in land use authority?
I can't answer that question for you.
Because I believe our planning director is the one who manages that piece. Is that correct?
Again, I can't answer that question for you. If you have something specific related to the Fire Service or to the Fire Chief or the Fire Marshal in regards to licensing, I can do my best.
I guess that's the point here, is that what you guys have recommended with the Fire Chief or his designee has recommended is that the Fire Chief determine that the proposed ordinance show compatibility with surrounding uses, which is a planning director function. Now, in the spirit of this issue, you know, I think something that Councilmember Chenier and all of us and Councilmember Harris have talked about is that this is an evolving ordinance. And so, I'm willing to move forward in accepting this ordinance because we want to see how things work and make things, and make sure that as we move with this industry, that we take every safeguard possible. But it seems a little, it seems a new precedent to allow the Fire Chief or designee or the Fire Marshal to now have land use authority. Maybe it's warranted in this area, and I'd like to say, let's try it out, but I think it sets an interesting precedent, or maybe a dangerous precedent, where you have an entity like that now having land use authority. So, my point to that, Mr. Mayor, I think that, one, and the issue with the childcare center, first of all, I think anybody complying for conditional use permit has to be within 600 feet of any of those areas. Second, I think, you know, the issue of conflating it with those who are operating illegally, I do want to thank our folks in the Police Department, code officers and law enforcement for going after all the folks who have been using illegal butane, and we have had some tremendous success after we replicated what the county was doing, and we've had a year's worth of that implication. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, look, I'm willing to move forward on this. I just wanted to make sure that we drill down on this particular purpose, and if it makes you feel better, you know, in saying that the sky is blue, then I think we should move forward on it, but I think we, I would like to revisit this to make sure that it's not creating another additional bureaucracy that may not be needed.
The term, I don't know if appropriate, because it's an important discussion, but belts and suspenders, right? It's an additional protection, if you will, to make sure. And so, as I understand it, Councilmember Guerra, you know, you don't think it may be necessary, you're okay with it, but you want to make sure that this is tracked, because if a permit is not issued because of, we just had this discussion with the city manager in homelessness a moment ago with the critical infrastructure, if there's a feeling from the legitimate industry that the Fire Department is overexercising its discretion here, that you want this coming back to make sure that we take a good look at that. So, you're okay with the language as is, but we're going to make sure that we're striking the right balance between encouraging the new businesses and at the same time protecting the public safety. All right?
Absolutely. And just to answer that, we are absolutely in favor of working collaboratively with business. What we do want to make sure, though, is that we're doing it in a safe manner.
Okay. So, it's, okay, so we're okay for tonight, and to continue to be considered, and good work, Councilman Geta, on this measure. Okay. Very good. So, we now have...
I just want to make sure so both amendments are in.
Both amendments are in. Correct. Okay. So, it has been moved, and it has been seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain. That passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. We now move to file item five, and, members, this is not unique, but oftentimes, the way that measures come before the City Council is through a staff recommendation. This is a little different because this is a proposal that I, as the mayor of the city, is making, and so, I suppose I could get off the dais and present from there, but I will present, if it's okay with all of you, from the dais. And I ask for just a few minutes, a few minutes of forbearance in your time so I can explain exactly where it is we intend to go here tonight. All right. Let me begin. Let me begin with some thank yous. I want to thank Matt Ruyak, who, when I just walked in the room, for all of his work over the last couple of harried weeks getting this together. I want to thank Howard Chan and his team, and Mindy and your team on the logistics here of all this. I want to thank my colleagues, all of them, but especially Councilmembers Ashby and Harris for working very closely with me over the last couple of weeks to help draft this alternative. But I want to thank all of my colleagues, the entire council for standing up for young people. Councilmember Chenier, of course, built your career and continue to on this vital cause. And I want to thank Sack Kids First, who I know many are out in the audience here tonight for the incredible work that you've done at the grassroots over a long period of time to bring these crucial questions before the city of Sacramento. I want to take a few minutes to explain my alternative proposal and address upfront the process and policy questions that will be fairly, I'm sure fairly, raised this evening. First, on the process. Why am I bringing this alternative? I call it a better way to the city council on February 25th, one week before the March election. A little bit of history here. In November of 2018, the voters of Sacramento approved Measure U, the one cent sales tax with the additional half cent to be dedicated, not by law, but by intent, to inclusive economic development and core city services. Measure G qualified for the ballot on November the 19th, 2019, just a couple of months ago. During that long period of time between the passage of Measure U and the qualification of Measure G, almost all, excuse me, almost all of 2019, I engaged the Kids First Coalition and asked them to work with me to address some of the concerns that I and others had and have about the well-intended measure. Specifically, concerns raised about the impact on the general fund by dedicating any amount of money for a good cause without a new revenue source. Secondly, for me personally, as the mayor of this city, but for all of us, the impact on the promises I made during the Measure U campaign. Three, the proponents, the Kids First Coalition, made it clear that they had worked very hard, and I respect that, and that they did not want to have a conversation, at any point in time, frankly, to talk about a potential middle ground or compromise to address some of the Measure U implementation concerns that I had raised. And so people ask, why February 25th, again, a week before the election? And why not refer this measure to the Law and Legislation Committee, which would be the ordinary course of process and business? And I want to address both of those. I have been very clear, and I believe that I am always transparent. I want the voters to know when they go to the polls next week that there is a choice, that there is a choice, and in my opinion, and it's only one opinion, a better way that permanently sets aside real money for youth and youth programs while protecting our other promised investments specifically from Measure U. Parenthetically, I want to point out that if we put this on the ballot tonight, it is not done. Because we would be putting this on the ballot for November of 2020, we would have until, technically, August the 7th of 2020 to make any changes as a city council to the proposed charter amendment, to fix any mistakes if anything was done in haste, or to continue, frankly, to have a policy discussion about how to do this, if, in, not just a better way, but in the best way. So I want to place an alternative on the November ballot for voters to consider, and I want to do it now so that they're informed of that when they go to the polls next week. And of course, if Measure G fails, I want to ensure that there is a strong backup. And I believe, just knowing psychology and the way that politics works, if Measure G fails, and we decided we were going to wait till after the election to put on an alternative, it would be much less likely to garner the momentum or the support from the community and the council to put an alternative on the November ballot. So I believe that this alternative represents the upfront approach and better than reacting either way after the March election. Now, why no law and legislation committee, which is the standard way the city council would first consider an ordinance? Fair question. As I said, the Measure G effort qualified on November the 19th. So it has been about three months since November of 2019, and frankly, and I only know how to just be upfront and honest about it, it took most of that time to put together a thoughtful proposal and draft it in a way that would be ready for public consideration. We frankly did not have the time to put it before the law and ledge committee and get it before the council before the election date of March the 3rd next week. And once again, to reiterate, we can make any appropriate changes, no matter what we do tonight for November, up until August the 7th. So now let me go to the policy and the substance and why it is I am putting forward this alternative proposal. Measure G is well-intended. It takes 2.5% of the city budget regardless of whether there is an upswing in the economy or a recession, and every year it puts that amount of money into a special youth fund. My alternative would put 20% of any expanded revenue, year to year, in a separate fund for youth. And we've done the calculation, and apples to apples, we would put, based upon last year's city budget, about $5 million, about $5 million into the alternative youth fund that I propose. Now Measure G has no adjustment downwards, even when the city is suffering through a downturn or a recession. My alternative does have a maintenance of effort provision, which says that if there is a downturn, not just this youth fund, but all youth programs cannot be cut any greater than the amount of general government funding that is cut as well, excluding police and fire. I'm going to be upfront about that, excluding police and fire. Measure G limits the city council's role in appropriating the money, which will add up and be tens of millions of dollars, limits the city council's role to voting up or down on a three-year expenditure plan. We can't change it. We could send it back and say, do over, but the money doesn't get out the door to the young people unless and until we approve a plan that we don't have the authority to actually construct. My alternative empowers the existing youth commission. Again, a commission, Councilmember Chenier and others have championed here as a strong representative voice for youth, to make recommendations and to give the council, the elected body, with all our imperfections, the ability to make the final decisions. Measure G says no supplantation based upon the highest year, if you will, of additions to youth funding that we've ever had. My alternative says no supplantation, but bases it on a five-year average as opposed to one year. There are a number of reasons why I believe the alternative that I proposed tonight is better than G. Here is the core for me, and my colleagues may all have different points of view if they support my alternative for why they would support it, but here it is for me. We led, and I frankly put my prestige of the mayorship on the line if you would this Measure U campaign, remember this, we proposed a full cent. Some of my friends were rightfully worried that if we had lost, we not only would have lost the additional half cent, we would have wiped out the existing half cent, and we would have been in a hell of a hole. And we took the risk, and I thought it was a smart risk because we wanted to promise something better for our neighborhoods, including our kids, when we fought for Measure U. It was a once-in-a-generation campaign to promise the people a funded agenda for inclusive economic development. Our first investments illustrate our commitment. If you look at the list of things that we have funded since the passage of Measure U for youth, it is a long list, and yet it is not yet near complete. But everything from the youth pop-ups, to the Simmons Center, to St. John's, to the City of Refuge, to Advance Peace, to La Familia Center, to the Del Paso Sports Complex, to Thousand Strong, to Summer Night Lights, to North Area Freedom Schools, to kindergarten, to college savings accounts, to fair free transit for youth, to the aquatics facility, the Powerhouse Science Center, Fairy Tale Town, Grant Union High Pool Hours, Career Pathways, and the list goes on. Last June, when the city council passed its first implementing budget after the passage of Measure U, we committed the following: $40 million a year for the next five years to be dedicated towards inclusive economic development. The focus, again, is on youth, but here's the key point, that's not all we promised. Last month, we unanimously passed a measure or a motion to dedicate $100 million for housing, and affordable housing, our single biggest challenge in this city. Another $100 million is coming, if we follow through, for revitalization of Stockton Boulevard, Franklin Boulevard, Del Paso Boulevard, workforce development, major economic opportunities like the Mobility Center and Aggie Square. So here is our current fiscal situation, and we have to deal with the reality and govern. We have $36 million this year in essentially fund balance, and I believe, and I'm going to recommend with the city manager, that we set aside some of that for prudent reserve because you have to predict against the rainy day, but we will have most of that money to be able to invest in youth and in our inclusive neighborhood agenda. We have enough money to follow through on all of that and our capital commitment, which we intend, thanks to Steve Hansen, work and all of our work, to amount to $250 million over time. And when we take up next month our long-awaited efficiency study from the Management Partners Consultants, I'm confident that we will actually be able to follow through on our five-year and longer commitment to set aside $40 million a year for five years and beyond. I really believe that, in addition to the bonds. But here is the literal, and I mean literal, red flag, and the reason why I propose this alternative. While we have $36 million this year, next year, our budget projection shows that we are going to have a deficit of over $21 million. That jumps the following year to $27-plus million and jumps even higher, not much higher, but stays in the high $27-million-plus range in fiscal year 2334. If we add Measure G, $12.5 million on top of that without additional revenue, I am genuinely concerned, and I think with good reason, that if we add 12 and 1/2 million on top of these deficit numbers that I just read, even with the efficiencies that we will make here at City Hall because we must, we will not then, when it all adds up, be able to follow through on all of our promises, especially to be able to fund a robust affordable housing strategy so that we can prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place and help those people working and living on the edge who need an affordable place to live. The better way that I propose would establish a protected and robust youth fund, because it would establish the fund through revenue growth, not off the top of the existing budget, regardless of whether we have revenue growth. My alternative would allow us to follow through on every other piece of our progressive agenda, especially to address our housing crisis. So that's as clear as I can lay out a complicated subject. And I really hope tonight is a spirited discussion, but I hope it is a, I know it will be a respectful discussion, but a discussion among people who all care deeply about young people, about our neighborhoods, and about the future of our community. I know, you know, I have spent my public life fighting for this. I started as a city council member, launching Sacramento Start. That was my, that's how I made my bones. But there's no buts here. It's not right or wrong, really. It's about choices, and I want to make sure that we have the ability, again, to follow through on everything we promised with Measure U, without having to reel, and with the confidence to be able to do great things all across our city. So that's it. I'm not sure how we want to do this. We've got 20 people. Members, it's up to the members. Do you want to be heard first, or should we hear from the public? Let's hear from the public, and then we can have a discussion.
Thank you. As the mayor said, I have 20 speakers. The first is Donnie Blumenstock, Carter Nelson, then Glenn Fuji.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, city council members. It's nice to be here with you all.
Good to be with you.
I'm Donnie Blumenstock, and I'm an arts advocate and also an advocate for youth programs. In particular, I support the nexus of those two interests, arts education for youth. I'm here today to support the city council placing the Sacramento Youth Enrichment Fund Act on the November 2020 ballot. I appreciate the consistent and generous support thus far of the mayor and city council for both arts organizations and youth programming. This proposal makes a bold investment in our city's youth by dedicating unprecedented resources annually into a youth enrichment fund that will help support efforts to bring meaningful arts experiences to every child, which is very important to me. The Sacramento Youth Enrichment Fund Act protects funding for the arts, creative economy, and arts education as part of a sustainable, balanced budget. Most importantly, not only does this proposal support our city's youth, but it does so in a financially sustainable way, giving the city the means to continue making much-needed strategic and consistent investments in the arts and creative economy. I worry when irrevocable and arbitrary budget decisions are made through the ballot box, a method that has rarely resulted in good public policy, tying the hands of the people we elect to use their wisdom in making the difficult decisions that must be made in tough economic times. This youth enrichment fund will allow the city to continue to fulfill the dreams and promises of Measure U, which we can all agree is very important to our city's economic future. That is why I am in strong support of this measure. I urge all of you to please put this proposal on the November 2020 ballot. Thank you to the mayor and city council for your leadership on this important issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donnie. Thank you.
Carter Nelson.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name is Carter Nelson. I'm here representing the Sacramento Association of Realtors. We represent over 7,000 members in the greater Sacramento region. We prefer a method of funding such as the mayor's proposal rather than Measure G, which could negatively impact the city's ability to use Measure U funds to assist affordable housing and the homeless crisis, which we feel is pivotal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Fuji, then Tracy Schall.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. I'm Glenn Fuji on behalf of the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce, and we are here today to support the ballot measures that were put before us today, and we want to thank you for proposing the alternative measure. We think that the proposal is a more financially prudent approach for ensuring the city of Sacramento continues to invest in our youth while protecting the overall health and vitality of our city. of our city. We feel that this approach ensures youth programs to remain an important component of our city's budget while still being able to invest in housing and inclusive economic development, two of our most critical needs. We cannot forget how important it is that this city remain committed to investing in our disadvantaged areas of our city. We made a promise to our residents that it was time to truly invest in areas of our city that have been forgotten. We have to create stronger commercial corridors with more job opportunities. Their futures depend on having better wages and more upward career mobility. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tracy Schall, then Chris Harvey.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of city council. I'm Tracy Schall. I'm an economic development and community relations consultant, so it's nice to be with you tonight. And I'm joined by Frank Louie, who is a longtime Sacramento community leader. And so I wanted to be here this evening to discuss the alternative proposal. And while I'm working on many workforce initiatives as well as inclusive economic development initiatives, I think that this proposal allows us to ensure that we're able to provide for the three components that make for a strong economy, and that is around we must have housing, we must have youth programming, but in addition, we must also ensure that we have job creation, business investment, and business growth in order to provide jobs and allow these businesses and corridors that have been forgotten to be able to grow and prosper in the way other areas of our city have done so. So we are in support of the alternative measure, and thank you for proposing it. Never am a fan of ballot box budgeting, and so I think the alternative proposal does not put it in a situation where you guys are not in control and able to have the ability to shape where our budget dollars should go. Thank you.
Next speaker is Chris Harvey, then Dr. O.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of council, city manager Chan. I'm here tonight not as an employee of the Sacramento Fire Department, but as a lifelong city resident and a homeowner and council member, Hanson's District Four. I'm here to oppose, voice my opposition to Measure G in its current form. I was born and raised in Sacramento. I benefited from youth services myself as a child. I don't think anybody in this room would argue that those who are in favor of Measure G are earnest and want the best for the youth. I think we can all agree that that's important and necessary. However, to legislate a fixed percentage of the general fund would be a huge mistake. And to do so for a period of twelve years, I think, would be the height of fiscal irresponsibility, ignoring the possibility of economic downturns that may occur, as the mayor's pointed out. I think it's also—to put it not lightly lunacy—to put the administration of these funds in the hands of twelve appointees that have no accountability to voters and no experience. So in closing, I would say that I support the mayor's alternative plan, and I urge those in this room to do the same. Thank you.
Dr. O, then Rivka Sasse.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Egeoma Anuju, the program director of the Black Child Legacy Campaign in Del Paso Heights. Since I started working with the Del Paso Heights CIL in August 1st, 2019, we have put fourteen young black men in the ground. That means I've had to meet with fourteen mothers over the last six months as they got prepared to bury their sons. To a fault, every mother has told me that one of the things they wished they had was more opportunities for their sons to be able to engage in positive activities here in the city, and that that could have made a difference in their sons being alive today. We know that the Black Child Legacy and the work that we've been doing has had an impact here in Sacramento. And so it's very hard for me to be able to sit in front of these mothers and other mothers that come into our office every day and say, hey, apples to apples, oranges to oranges, we're talking about a hundred-and-fifty-million investment over the next twelve years versus at max a sixty-million-dollar investment. They're asking me, what are we going to do to save my younger sons? What are we going to do to save our nephews? What are we going to do to save my neighbors' children? And this proposal, apples to apples, oranges to oranges, really doesn't do that. One of the things that the mayor said in his debrief is that everything is on the table except for police and fire. Why aren't our children off the table as well? Why can't we say if police and fire are that important intervention, right, then we can also prioritize prevention by saying two-point-five million, which is not a big amount when you consider the totality, right? We still have ninety-seven-point-five percent of the budget to divert to other things in the city. Why can't we say that prevention is just as important as intervention, and that our children are on the table, just like the police and fire are not off the table? Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
The next group is Rivka Sasse with Jared Keller and Katie Middleton, and then Karen Wilson.
That's Kathy Middleton. We're the very small executive team who are part of Sacramento Public Library. We're here because while we have questions about the mayor's proposal, we believe that this is a good alternative. As an agency that is likely to—that has still not recovered from the Great Recession in terms of city funding and the city's commitment to the twelve libraries that we now operate, we do have questions. We hope to use the next several months to discuss those questions, including to understand what base services really mean from a city perspective, and to stand behind supporting youth. We all devote—have devoted most of our careers to supporting the work that helps our young people thrive and grow. We want to see Sacramento be a leader in that regard, and we want to make sure that we're continuing to deliver the twenty-eight-hundred programs that our city's youth benefit from. That's twenty-eight-hundred programs. It's about ninety-five thousand youth in the city of Sacramento are touched by the library. It's the seventy-four thousand students who have library cards, thanks to an initiative that we put together a couple of years ago. It's the two-hundred-and-seventy-five teen volunteers who do everything from put-together prom drive dresses to organize our Yule Ball every year. It's those kinds of activities that we want to continue to support, that we believe need to be more visible to all of you. So we're going to invite ourselves back, so you understand exactly what it is that we do to contribute to the youth of this city. But thank you for bringing this forward, Mr. Mayor, and we want to help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your team.
Next speaker is Karen Wilson, then Flo Kofir.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'm Karen Wilson. I'm president of the Friends of the Sacramento Public Library. We have something over two thousand members at the twenty-eight libraries throughout the entire system, and a lot of them are in the twelve branches that are in the city. We're deeply involved in those branches because we care about libraries and the civic infrastructure that they represent. They're the heart of our community. They're in our communities, and they represent and serve the needs and interests of people from the minute they open till the minute they close, and I know that because I'm out there. You're likely to see somebody who doesn't speak English learning to speak English from somebody who comes in with a backpack and clearly has other things they could be doing at that moment, but they're tutoring at the library, really making a difference, one life at a time. We thank you for this proposal that offers us more time to get engaged. We hadn't had a lot of time to get engaged in Measure G, or we certainly would have, and we would like to be engaged with you in this discussion, so thank you for this proposal.
Thank you very much, Karen. Thank you.
Next speaker is Flo Kofir, then Bob Ward.
Good evening, mayor, members of city council. My name is Flo Kofir, and I want to start by saying that I'm incredibly intrigued by the bond proposal, and I certainly appreciate that there are some concerns about the credit rating of the city if Measure G passes. However, that counterargument is not particularly compelling to me, because I'm one of the people who advocated for the passage of Measure U. I also voted for Measure U. And one of the campaign promises when we were asked to vote for Measure U was that the second half cent would be spent on inclusive economic development and community building. But one of the first steps that was taken by this body was to add ten million dollars per annum to the police budget. And that is not what we signed up for when we voted for and passed Measure U. And so that broken campaign promise is the reason I'm standing before you today, because I normally am really—you know, I am—I am at least compelled by the argument that setting aside certain amounts of money makes it so that people potentially can't respond to emergencies. But when you're not doing the thing that we entrusted you to do before even the Measure U Advisory Committee was put in place, that's a real concern for me. And it's more of a concern for me because the amount that—the two-and-a-half percent would be about twelve million dollars, and the amount that was reflexively given to the police to add to their already twenty-five million dollars they were getting per year from Measure U is ten million dollars. So we're really today here talking about two million dollars. That's—I mean, it's not pocket change for real people, but it's pocket change in a city budget. And so it's not compelling to me to say that the credit rating is impacted by this. The credit rating is impacted by all of the other funding decisions that have been made thus far, and this one—it just—it feels disingenuous. It feels like children are not as important as many of the other things that we've elected to spend money on. So—and also, we can't afford to tie the investments in children to increases in revenue. That means that when the revenue goes down, we lose that money. And I think our families deserve a lot better than that.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is currently—
And now, it's not to carry back and forth, but I actually have such regard and respect for you, and also the role you are playing in the community, that I want to engage just a little bit in the conversation.
Sure. Please.
First of all, as I said earlier, there is a maintenance of effort in the alternative proposal. And it's the same maintenance of effort, frankly, that the voters passed two different times when creating new resources for our city libraries. So the city budget for youth, and not just the youth fund, but for youth in general, cannot go down any more than any other general fund department. Now, on police—the police and fire issue, this would take longer to dissect, but here's the thing. We passed a resolution last June, which committed our city to spending forty out of the fifty million dollars. And it was a compromise, wasn't the full fifty, I grant you that, but forty out of the fifty for inclusive economic development, including these broad range of investments. So the remaining ten, yes, is for general government. And when you really break down the budget, and this is what I look forward to doing at our workshop, some of those additional funding you save for public safety came not just at that ten million dollars remaining of the second half cent of Measure U, but it came from overall revenue growth in the city budget. So call us on it, Flo. And you don't speak, frankly, to the tens of millions of dollars of youth investments that we actually have made since June of 2019, as part—excuse me, since November of 2018 to youth. And I listed a number of them. So in fairness, if we go back on our word of not committing forty out of the fifty million dollars, eighty percent of the new—of the new half cent to inclusive economic development, then I think your argument would be much stronger to me. But you pick out one part of it, and you conflate the rise in general fund revenue, the overall Measure U pot, and you make a claim that I'm not sure is actually backed up by the facts. Please.
Do I have permission?
Yes, you may. Of course.
Okay. So my argument in response to that would be, but the ten million dollars was not a one-time allocation, whereas all the other revenue that's been given to youth programs and others were one-time allocations. And so that does then mean that you have carved out in perpetuity twenty percent of the Measure U money that was promised as a hundred percent for inclusive economic development to give to the police, when fire were actually the people that we—that we said a lot of this money was going to go to. So the fact that they're sort of in cahoots on this is kind of surprising, because they got none of the extra money. They weren't included in that. So I do think that it's not fair to say that we don't have twelve million dollars a year for twelve years. By the way, there is a sunset on this. So we don't have twelve million dollars per year? That's not exactly true. It's just we didn't make decisions. We funded other things, and so now we're saying we don't have it. But that's not—like, it's sort of like people who live above their means when they make good money. Like, you can be broke making six figures because you don't spend your money on certain things. So I do think it's important for us to just recognize that there is money there, and there's a really compelling reason to do this, and it's to, A, see how well it works, but B, also to protect this money in the time of an economic downturn when our families need our support the most.
Good argument. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Next speaker is Bob Ward, and then Kevin Ferreira.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Bob Ward. I'm the business manager for IBW Local 34. We employ over two thousand electricians within our region, and many with family and kids. I'm a newly-minted father with a newborn baby boy as well.
Congrats.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm here to encourage the unanimous support of the Sacramento Youth Enrichment Fund Act. I have learned while managing a large organization that much of what we do as decision-makers comes down to balance. We have—we have to balance the needs of many deserving groups and decide how to spend these precious resources. We need to invest in our kids, ensure that they have an adequate program to prepare them for being productive adults. But we need to approach it with balance. We cannot do so at the expense of affordable housing, public safety, or investing in our infrastructure. The proposal does exactly that. It strikes an appropriate balance, and I strongly encourage you to support this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kevin Ferreira, then Nia Moore Weathers.
Good evening, mayor, council members. I'm Kevin Ferreira, the executive director of the Sacramento Sierras Building and Construction Trades Council, and I have with me Chris Greeney, who's the building trades president, as well as other members of the building trades. We are here to support the proposal of the Sacramento Youth Enrichment Fund Act to be put on the November 2020 ballot. We believe that this proposal will make bold and unprecedented investments in our city's youth by dedicating funds to community organizations, our city libraries, as well as other citywide initiatives and issues, while at the same time dedicating meaningful dollars to affordable housing, economic development, and public safety, and fulfilling the promises of Measure U. To building trades, we strongly ask that the city council place this measure, this initiative, on the November 2020 ballot. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Kevin.
Nia Moore Weathers, then Macworthy.
Hello, Mayor Steinberg and council. I'd like to take my two minutes to directly address those of you city elects and others in the room who call themselves progressives. How progressive is the Sacramento Youth Enrichment Fund if it, A, overlooks and specifically makes no mention of equitable investments for marginalized youth, and B, doesn't take advantage of youth voice and leadership when crafting it? That's a problem for me. Do any of you know what progressive means? Irrespective of whether you have voted or not, I would verge everyone in this room to understand that the mayor's countermeasure to Measure G was crafted harriedly and hastily—I'll use your words—sneakily and selfishly, without youth in mind. It's a self-serving measure that will reinforce youth criminalization, violence, and overall community trauma that is already happening in Sacramento streets, and which honestly is just more of the same for everyone. I had a really difficult time sitting here and watching all of the people in this room who I have worked with personally on several different occasions come out in not supportive of this. It's extremely frustrating to me. A District Four representative, Steve, really? I urge—you know, I urge the council to vote no if you actually want to appear like you care about kids, because I realize that for some of you, that's what it's probably about. Bye.
Next speaker is Macworthy, then Rob Fong.
First of all, when you said "true," it hit home. This is pimpin' babies. This is definitely pimpin' babies. Majority of the people come here and speak is tied somewhere to you, mayor, of non-profit organization. This is how you get your votes. Put another thing on the agenda. That's what you're doing. That's sad. You ain't got nothing done. You ain't got nothing wrong but bonds and grants since you've been here. Now you want to put another issue. You can't even show what the money for Measure U has been going. You're telling those young people you want to go out there and make a decision. Those kids can't oppose you because they don't know that you oppose your own. That's another way to get something going so you got some money. Quit playing games with poor folks. That's what you're doing. You're playing games based on babies, uh, enrich—what is the enrichment of a baby? Enrich what? We don't even have a library in Oak Park. Why? Because they sold it to Mac George Law School. And you go, how many—another more dollars, and we gonna do this fifty million dollars or forty million dollars? You can't do it— You can't do it, people. The thing is earmarked a percentage of the growth, or whatever the growth is, percentage. That's the best way to people to keep your babies going. You know you're going to get that money. You know you're going to get that money, but the way you want to do it is where we're going to have a backup here. And you can't even identify where the money is set up at. The money of the Measure U is in the bank, and you can't show us who making the interest on the lane there. Nobody but me go come here and say that money lays there in the bank. Who used that money? The bank used that money. Why can't you get a 90-day report on that money? How much interest it made? But you refuse to do that because of the show where you align at. That's what it is, show where you're doing. You align about the money. But put it as that, we gonna help the babies.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
People, you got to help your own babies.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Rob Fong, then Carson Watts.
So kind of a dream come true to be able to speak with Macworthy to the council. So thank you for that. My name is Rob Fong, here speaking on behalf of the Fongs of Francis Court, District Four. Wanted to speak on behalf of putting this measure on the ballot, kind of Measure G 2.0. I can tell you that when I was sitting up there, and we had to govern during the worst recession in our lifetime, it was really tough. Mayor, you know what that was like, trying to run the Senate, trying to balance the books of the state. So I just think that your proposal is a great sort of way to honor the youth in this city, but do it in a way that's more fiscally responsible, frankly. I think that you all, whoever the council is, needs to make those decisions around budget every year. That's kind of your biggest policy decision. So very much speaking in behalf of what you're trying to do, and when I found out that you and Angelique were together on something, I thought it had to be a fabulous, fabulous idea. So anyway, want the council to take note of that. So thank you.
Next speaker is Carson Watts, then Robert Naggs.
Hello, thank you for listening to me. My name is Carson Watts, and I am a program coordinator for a youth development organization, the California Center for Civic Participation. I'm a part of the SAC Kids First Coalition. And I think if each of you look around, you could take a moment to maybe look away from your screens and look at one another, I think we're all here for similar reasons, that we all care about youth in this community, that we all care about the future of Sacramento. And I just have a couple questions. One is, why not invest more in youth? And what you've outlined, Mr. Mayor, is that you want to put $5 million per year when Measure G puts 12. And so I wonder, my next question is, when is the time to invest in youth? And it's, you talk about fiscal responsibility, it's like, why not put it toward our future, the future members of our community? We know that maybe you won't get immediate economic gains from having a youth in an art program or some sort of cultural enrichment, but I work with youth all the time, and they're incredibly creative and powerful, and they're really upset. There's a lot of climate anxiety, economic anxiety about what they're going to do, how they're going to make a living wage. And if we don't give them positive outlets for that, they're going to numb themselves or, you know, get buried in the ground with their friends, like that man mentioned earlier. And so I urge you, like, look at the faces of the SAC Kids First Coalition. Look at the children and the youth that have showed up to support this because it's by them and for them. And so please, you have a choice, and it does involve giving up a little bit of your power, granting that power to the grassroots coalition, granting that power to the youth, you'll still have 97.5% of the budget to do whatever you want with. So invest in our future.
Thank you for the comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you for your argument. Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Robert Naggs, then Lynn Berkeley Baskin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. My name is Robert Naggs. I'm the vice president for Local 522. I represent over 600 firefighters that are proudly serving the city of Sacramento. I stand here tonight in opposition of Measure G, as we agree that it's a really bad budgeting move for the city. We agree that it ties the hands in the event of really poor economic times. It will drastically affect, or has the potential to drastically affect essential city services. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your proposal. We think it's very thoughtful, very well thought out, and by and large, it protects essential city services for the long term. Therefore, we stand with you, Mr. Mayor, in support of the proposal, and we ask that you all provide the approval to put it on the November ballot. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lynn Berkeley Baskin, then Jay Franco.
Esteemed Mayor and council members, on behalf of President Betty Williams of the NAACP, Measure G is more than an investment in our black and brown youth. Measure G says that this city acknowledges the century-long disinvestment in black people. A yes vote on G shows that the city is working to correct that racist generational disinvestment by guaranteeing a very small percentage of the budget on our youth. 2.5% with special emphasis on black and brown and underadvantaged youth compared to the more than 75% on public safety. Systems are designed to do exactly what the outcomes are. So if we spend more on policing our children and our families as compared to investing in them, it's no surprise why oppression lives on. This should come down to investing more in our youth and less in policing them. You can't have resources spent almost entirely in one direction and expect our youth to grow up and overcome the obstacles necessary to contribute at the same levels in our society as those who consistently and historically have access to power. Budgets are moral documents. They show who the city values and who they don't. I say no to the countermeasure. It cuts the budget across the board by the same percentage during an economic downturn. That's not fairness. That's called inequity. That's called disinvestment. That's called perpetuating systemically racist budgeting. Why? Because when you take something away from a community that already has a lot less power and resources than everybody else, that makes the gap bigger and the people at the bottom suffer the most. In this downturn situation, those children at the bottom are still poor, black, and brown. Yes, on Measure G gives hope and opportunity for future leaders. It invests in public safety because it invests in prevention. It offers opportunity for our youth to innovate, exercise their brilliance, and feel safe.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
And it will inspire future economic development.
Berkeley Baskin, just one quick question for you.
Sure.
Williams cannot be here.
Yes.
I appreciate the passion. I certainly appreciate the 100-plus-year contribution of the NAACP. But in fairness, NAACP opposed Measure U, is that correct?
We did, for this reason. We knew behind the scenes that the police would take precedence over everyone else.
Well, that's not true, but thank you. Okay, next.
Our next speaker is Jay Franco, then Sarah Michael Gaston.
Howdy. Yeah. It's funny that only once we propose a community plan to invest in our own communities, do you come with a plan of your own. When an overwhelming amount of your constituents tell you what you want, you tell them what you want. Did I say that right? No. When an overwhelming amount of your constituents tell you what we want, you tell them what you want. You must be running for another office. Got to keep the boys happy, am I right? Youth don't have political clout as it is, and now you oppose implementing positions in which more youth can have a sense of ownership and power in the city? This counterproposal and campaign is a slap in the face to all those who work day-to-day with youth in ways that the city and school districts may not have the capacity to do. Yet, we got here without your support. We got here because we did not compromise. We got here because this movement is bigger than a pop-up, bigger than an aquatic center, bigger than two stadiums. This is about the families who have lived and loved in the city for decades, who get overlooked on a day-to-day because career politicians put politics over people. Moment of silence for those that can't be here with us. And as I find more notes. What do you mean, Jay? Look, for example, one of those major differences between Measure G and the unflavored, watered-down dish Daryl has served us is equity. Other than the fact that he's proposing $10 million or so less, there is no focus on the historically disenfranchised communities that Measure G has stated in its language, which tells me this is purely a fiscal decision, not an equitable one. Opposition to Measure G means maintaining Sacramento's racial and social inequity. I wonder if Steve will stay around for this vote, since he publicly did not want to oppose the youth the first time. Your time's ticking.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sarah Michael Gaston, then Julius J. Cherry.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Because the gentleman called me out, and I met with him and Brown issues prior to Measure G, but the reason I had to leave last time is because we had a community meeting about a girl who was hit in a crosswalk, a 12-year-old girl, where 200 people were waiting to hear from me. And I think you, as youth, appreciate that as much as me sitting up here. So I'm sorry I missed that vote, but that is unfair to that family and to that community who wanted us to be there for them.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Michael Gaston with the SAC Kids First Coalition. The city's budget has grown significantly over the past three years, with about $190 million. You find millions of dollars for sports arenas. How can you say that you can't afford Measure G? What you are really saying is that you don't support youth of color and low-income youth. Let's be honest, the city council as a whole just wants to control where and how money is spent. This is always at the expense of the community, who you don't listen to, who you don't prioritize the voice of, and you are also not transparent with us. I.e., Measure U and the youth city council, the youth commission, like, how much did they really inform this proposal? Your proposal will only be 2.5 million per year if the city is growing. That's a small amount, less than 1% of the general budget. Our shirts tonight say, "Are you kidding? Are you for kids, or are you kidding?" And I also want to say that the status quo supports the mayor's proposal. The grassroots support Measure G. Vote no on the mayor's proposal.
Next speaker is Julius J. Cherry, then Carmen Martinez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council, madam clerk, and Mr. City Manager. My name is Julius Cherry, citizen of District 7. I also happen to have been blessed to hold a title of the former city fire chief department that I worked for for 30 years and was proud to lead it at the end of my career. It's been a long time since I've been to a city council meeting. Now I remember why. Thanks a lot, Rick. I'm sitting here thinking about the people that I know up there who care passionately about our youth and about children, and I'm like trying to figure out who these folks are talking about. I don't know anybody. I've been around a long time. I don't remember a mayor, and not to denigrate any other mayors that cared more about youth and youth programs than Mayor Steinberg and this council. It's pretty simple for me. I support the Sacramento Youth Enrichment Fund Act being placed on the ballot. And here's a reason. Clearly, youth and youth programs are an important part of this city. It always has been, and it always will be, whether there's a downturn or whether we have a surplus. The problem is, as a former member of the city's executive team and being responsible for helping to manage the budget, at the time I was fire chief, the city fire department's budget was somewhere around $100 million. I'm not sure what it is now. But the more nondiscretionary spending you have, the less flexibility you have in trying to manage your budget. And there is a downturn coming. We all know that. Hopefully, you know, the city's been doing very well. We hope to continue to grow. It's vibrant. I'm excited about what I see in and around Sacramento, including youth and youth programs. But, you know, as they learned at the state level, when Governor Brown was governor, that there's always going to be a downturn, and we have to be in a position to be able to manage the city's resources in a responsibly, a fiscally responsible way when that downturn occurs. And so for that reason, I support placing the Sacramento Youth Enrichment Fund Act on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Carmen Martinez, then Dexter Niskak.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg. You have a choice to stand with the youth that you serve or to remain their oppressor. Need I remind you that it is your job to listen to your constituents and push forward the measures that the youth themselves have determined would best benefit them? You were not raised in Sacramento. You are not a young person growing up in Sacramento. And you are not a youth who is being oppressed in Sacramento. I don't know if you've noticed, but so far, the people that support your proposal tonight are not youth either. Who are you to say that you know better than the youth themselves what is best for them? Your job is not to create opposition against your constituents, it is to support them. By even creating a counterproposal, you have demonstrated to these youth here today that you are not on their side. And if you are not with us, you are simply against us. Thank you.
I have five more speakers. The next is Dexter Niskak, then Jay Lee Vang.
You guys doing good? Everybody having fun tonight? You know, we are, you know? So my name's Dexter. I work with East Bay Asian Youth Center in Sacramento. And as you can see here with all the yellow shirts, these are the youth. These are the ones that put their time into this whole measure. These are the ones that put their time into the whole coalition. It wasn't just the adults. It was the faces out here with these yellow shirts.
You need to address the city council.
Okay, yeah, but I just want you guys to make sure you guys are focused up there, not on the computers, you know? So in 2015, East Bay Asian Youth Center, we drafted a youth survey. We conducted it, highlighted and identified key aspects that are youth, specifically youth, over 1,500 results found necessary within the Sacramento city, growing up underserved. We found that it was basically transitional high school help, college career pathways, you know, the basics. Once we had an official proposal for Measure G, we made arrangements to meet with almost all city council members, if not all of you guys, plus the mayor. And if it wasn't you guys, it was your staffs. While we tried to really take into concern your guys' inputs, we, as a coalition, decided to move on with our own proposal because we deemed that 1% wasn't enough for our youth. In 2018, the Sacramento Children's Fund began to see its birth. After working for six straight months, we collected 39,000-plus verified signatures from the city of Sacramento's voters, and that's official. Let me remind you that the youth of Sacramento led this movement. These youth right here, okay? They spent their hard work hours, they spent their time on weekends and weekdays, and I just want to like let you guys really realize that, you know? So I have a question for you guys now, especially the mayor. Your proposal was just proposed less than a month ago, okay? And I just want to kind of, kind of just brainstorm, you know? How many youth were involved with your proposal? How many are, you know, inside of the initiative language? You also plan to use the youth commission, but how many of those?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
How many of those youth on the youth commission reflect us?
Thank you. The next speaker is Jay Lee Vang, then Natalie Yang.
Good morning, city council. How was your day today? Well, me being here today instead of at home doing my homework, that just shows how important this is to me and also to these youth here. The city of Sacramento currently has many low-income neighborhoods where there's poverty rate of 19.8%, which with Sacramento's current population, one out of every 5.1 residents out of Sacramento live in or below the poverty line, many of which many consist of youth of color, like many of us in here. And by welcoming Measure G, I believe that we could change the lives of these people within the poverty line, especially in areas that need it, like Valley High and Meadowview. City council, if you agree, like many of us do, we have to do anything in our power to ensure that our youth are ready and able to guide their future. So what's more important? Business or children, or our future and money? We made Measure G to benefit our neighborhoods and to further benefit the future of our young people, yet your plan does not focus on this at all. Many youths like me worked our asses, offered three years straight consulting with hundreds of worthy youth, gathering approximately 39,000 signatures, and are currently campaigning for this one cause that could possibly change not just my life, but the lives of many people in this area. Youth like me are the future, and we can make it better with Measure G. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Natalie Yang, then Tiffany Thau.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Forgive me, I'm a little nervous.
Be nervous.
My name is Natalie. I'm 18. First and foremost, with all due respect, I'm pretty sure you guys are the same type of people to encourage young people to start voting, right? But here's what I gotta say. We're here, we're president, we're at the city council voting that Measure G needs to be established here in the city of Sacramento for the sake of our youth. Just by looking at our community and the youth, you can definitely see the improvements that need to be made, especially the services that are and to, that are to and for the youth. The youth are our future. We need to see, we need to set this for them so they have something to go off and go off of as in building a career path for their future, planning at a young age, taking charge for their lives like how they should be. Having Measure G will only give the youth that good push to start planning their lives and investing into their own life as well as their future. So with that being said, are you really in it for the kids or is it, are you just kidding? Thank you.
Next speaker is Tiffany Thau, then Yara Roots is our final speaker.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Thau, and I'm kind of nervous right now. Like, it's really hot for me.
Take your time.
And so, I'm here today telling or asking you guys if you guys are really supporting youth and people around here. And we wrote this Measure G, right here, us, everyone standing here today, our youths, our people with yellow shirts, saying, "Are you really for kids or are you just kidding?" We are here today because we really want to support this measure so we could help the youth around here, and we really care for them. And everyone standing here today consulted with hundreds of other young people. We work our blood, sweat, and tears every day, like, every morning to every, to every afternoon, asking people to vote and support this measure. All of us here today now wrote Measure G to make a big difference for us. Your plan has no goals, no strategies, no money, and no focus on our neighborhoods. Last year, you say you supported this measure. Why do this year you're going against us? If you really wanted to support this, then support this measure instead of opposing against it. And if you really are for kids, then you wouldn't, sorry, excuse me, then you wouldn't have made a measure going against us if you're really going to support the youth and kids around here, in this room, everyone around here, and around you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yara Roots is the final speaker on this item.
Hello, my name is Yara Roots. I'm 10.
Take your time. You're doing good. Yeah, but the mic's still a little bit. Take your time. Next, stop the clock till he catches his breath, please. Thank you. Take your time.
I can't do this.
You can do it. You can do it.
God, just like how you do it at our office.
Tell us what's in your heart. Tell us what you're thinking. He wants to do more for kids. That's what I see. Okay.
Mayor, may I ask him a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I, excuse me, sir?
No, no, sir.
What, tell us your name again.
Uh, my name is Yara Roots.
You're, how old are you, buddy?
I'm 10.
10, and what school do you go to?
Charles Mac.
And did you work on this campaign?
Yeah.
Did you help get signatures?
Yeah.
And you wanted to come and tell us that today?
Yeah.
And, and do you have some family and relatives here too?
Yeah.
Sisters or something? And they worked hard also?
Um, my brother did.
Your brother did? That's good, because my son never gives his brother any credit, so you're already a really good little brother. And so I think you're very brave to come up and tell us how you feel. You did a really good job. Is there anything else you want us to know?
Um, we all go out every Saturday, and we, you know, we tell people to vote for Measure G.
Mm-hmm.
And, yeah, we just, you know, spend a lot of our time.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think, yeah.
Because you want to do more for kids?
Yeah.
Yeah. Good job, buddy. You're a great advocate.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you. Thank, thank you for your hard questioning, Councilmember Ashburn. Okay, that, that, that is, that is the public testimony. Let's now turn it over to the members of the city council. Thank you all for... No, no, sir. That's not the way it works. You sign up, but you got to sign up on time, so thank you, sir.
I did sign up on time.
Nope. Next, Councilmember Shanir.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank kind of all my friends over the years for coming out, IBW, the trades, Kevin, the library, the realtors, kind of all the adults in the room that came out to, to speak tonight. I think it's important. What's more important for me at this point, could I ask everyone who either collected signatures, helped write this thing, or made phone calls to stand up? Thank you. So when we look at this, we're looking at the future of our city. We're looking at whether we're sustainable. We're looking at whether we're successful, and we're really looking at the young people who, if we provide the supports and services that they need, that they desperately need, we will be a great city. Without doing that, I don't think we will. I have a couple of general comments. I'm not going to get into kind of Measure G and debating points of that. If anyone wants to do that, I'll go there, but I don't think that's why we're here tonight. We're really here to talk about what the mayor's thinking. So I have a couple of comments I want to make overall, and then I want to talk about the mayor's initiative. So now, could you put up the one that's folded? That one, yeah. So, first of all, let's talk a little bit about the money. I've been on the council nine years. Even through difficult times, I feel like we've always been able to find money for what folks on this dais want. I'm not going to go into specifics, but if you look at this chart, I had asked our finance people to look at the general fund and look at the surpluses that we've had in the general fund every year. The key number on this, which is a little hard to read, but if you look in the bottom right corner as you're looking at this, it says $15.9 million. Since 2007, '08, that's the surplus that we've had, the average surplus that we've had each year since 2007, 2008. That includes a couple of years where we've been in recession. So if you take that out and you just look at the last few years, $36 million, $28 million, $29 million, $33 million. In the last five years, that's been, the average has been close to $30 million a year that we've had left over. So that's issue number one. I think that the money is there. This is really not a matter of whether or not we have the money. This is a matter of priorities, and what we think is the most important thing and the most important way to spend those dollars. I, I think that the mayor has done a fabulous job since he's been here and led us in many, many, many things. We just don't agree on this one. You know, if we look at the $40 million a year that this council has voted to set aside, and you think about Measure G, that would be about 20% or 25% of that money were of the second half cent, if it's $12.5 million a year. So I don't see it personally as spending additional dollars or putting us in more debt. I see it moving right into what you have set forward for us, saying we want to put 40 million into inclusive economic development. There were a lot of folks who spoke who are more articulate than I am, but I, I think that that's a really important point. The other point that Ms. Kofler made is that everything that we put into youth thus far has been one-time money. The pop-ups, the transportation piece that we've talked about, everything we've done. And so there's no guarantee we're going to have to fight for that money every year as opposed to other things that we've done in an ongoing, in an ongoing fashion. But I think if, if we hold true to the 40 million a year, Measure G just becomes a part of that. That's our youth component of it, which we made a commitment to, to the community when we did Measure U. We haven't seen also, for example, the efficiency studies that are coming. So we don't know what that could be. And I, I think this is a little, there are a number of things, of data pieces that we need to see, I think, before we actually go really forward on this, and, and that's one of them. We don't know what the potential is there, if there's potential. We don't know what we have to do on collective bargaining and all of that. So overall, to me, I think we have the money. I think it's a matter of priorities, and if we think about what we need to do as a city and what we need to invest in, I think the discussion that we should be having is how much do we put in public safety, traditionally fire and police, versus public safety to me, prevention programs and the future of our city? So that's, that's the first point. Mr. Mayor, if I can, I want to walk through, and now if you want to, put up the other sheet. I'm going to pass out a couple of things. We took a...
Jay, can I ask you a question about the chart?
Sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
But before we move on, because, because budgets are something that you've...
We have a chart if you might.
Can you go back?
Yeah, thank you.
Budgets are something that you're very good at, and I learned that the moment I joined this dais. If you look, and the question I had for you is, you show, starting in 15, 16, and then it carries until really the last fiscal year. It looks like the Measure U reserve is included in this number, which was money we set aside in case Measure U wasn't extended?
Which would be part of the $36 million.
Yeah, but that wasn't, that was a reserve that then we, when Measure U got renewed in 2018, we plugged into one-time funds last year. Is that right?
I believe so.
But I, is this chart in those numbers with...
You'd have to, our finance people did the start for me. I asked them what the overall surplus was moving out. We still have Measure U, so I think we're, we're in the ballpark here.
Okay. Well, I just, because, because we got that money freed up only because Measure U got renewed, so that's, that was being carried. Maybe I can ask Laney or someone later.
Yeah. Don does it. When we get, when we get to...
Yeah, no problem.
...the dais, we can, we can...
But I think, I want to be really clear, because there's two things going on here. One is, I do think we have funds because we do budget very conservatively. I think that's a good move to do. Chris from the Fire, Fire 522 has called out every year how much money you have left over, so thank you for this. I'm giving you a footnote on this one. So, so I think, again, I want to be really clear. This is about our priorities as much as anything else. It's not necessarily about where the dollars go. If we, we need to make decisions about what's most important, and I think that over time, for lots of reasons, every time we do have a recession or we need cuts, kids stuff is the first to go, and I'm just not willing to, to vote for that anymore. What I want to do, if you can put the other chart up, so we spent some time going through the proposal. I can count. I can count to five, so I think this will probably get on the ballot in November. So my responsibility and doing a lot of work over time, I think, is to help make this as good as we can. So I'll pass this out to the council. I'm also going to give you guys a side-by-side that has Measure G, also this piece, and then our recommendations. I wouldn't spend a lot of time on it now, but just for you to have. But what I do want to walk through are the recommendations that we have. If this moves forward, I don't have any expectation that this is going to be voted on tonight, but I would want, hopefully get a commitment, Mr. Mayor, that these are things when we bring this back and tweak it, that we will look at these. I have not touched the dollar amount on this. What we're looking at is the infrastructure of the initiative to make sure that it's sustainable and as good as it can be. So I want to walk through these points. First is prioritize the most impacted populations, both in the work we've done around inclusive economic development, what you've heard tonight, and then also clearly stated in the Youth Development Campaign, which said, "We promote equity, justice, accountability with a concerted application of resources towards those youth in greatest need." What I think we need to do is include in the initiative a priority for, for those young people who need the most. So that's the first piece there. I also think that we need, and this, some of this is taken from Measure G, some of it is taken just from our experience over the last few years, a multi-year strategic plan for young people. We could expand on the citywide youth development plan that we adopted two and a half years ago now, but I think we need something very concrete to look at. I, I know in your initiative, funding can be done at any time. I think what we need to do is get on a regular cycle, so as we're looking at a plan, we can fund on a yearly or multi-year basis. That also helps us with our accountability. We need a grant-making infrastructure. I will tell you, when we did the pop-ups and when we've done some other things, the city has very little capacity to make grants in a very smart way. So what we need to do, I think, is put some percentage aside. Measure G did this. It's good public policy and good practice for evaluation, to develop metrics, to administer the program. If we're looking at, in, in your piece, $5 million a year more, who is going to administer those programs or who is going to do the funding on it? I think we need to take care of those folks in the departments who are going to be working on this as well. So that would include putting some money aside for strategic planning, grant-making, grants management, data collection, evaluation, communications, and community engagement. We need to have an ongoing dialogue with the community about what's important and as we go forward. I think we need to incorporate the expertise in decision-making. I think having this go through the Youth Commission is great, but they're not, the capacity, first of all, the Youth Commission does look like the young people that were standing up here. I go to the Youth Commission almost every month and, and work with them, and they're a great bunch of young people, but they don't have the capacity right now to make recommendations on grants. What we need to do, if we're going to put them in that position, is two things. One, we need to bulk up the infrastructure that supports the Youth Commission, which I think is important to do, and we're kind of along that road. But also, you know, as we do grants and bring experts in the field together to read grants like the Department of Education or others do, we should set up a program to do that. So I, I think the Youth Commission on their own is setting them up for failure if we don't, if we don't work with them, but also have expertise going into the grant-making I think, turn that over. Thank you. I, I think, and this was done in Measure G, I believe, provide explicit lists of non-eligible expenditures. So we need to, we need to be very clear about what we're doing here so, so money doesn't get drained off. I think that I would, I would want to include expanded sources of revenue growth as we go forward. If, if we do new taxes, whatever that looks like, that percentage, because those are new dollars, your percentage of 20% should stick with that. We need to talk about the maintenance of effort. I think by excluding police and fire, we're excluding 85% of our general fund, and it's just a, it's a very stark statement that our young people are not as important as our policemen and our, our police people and our fire people. We can't, I'm not willing to make that statement. I think they're every bit as important. We have a great police. We have great fire, but we need to put our young people on the same plane as that, and by saying, you know, "We'll keep up with everybody but police and fire," it just doesn't cut it for me. And then, lastly, I think we need to really think about accountability through performance audits and financial audits. I would give the, we, we've bulked up the treasure, not the treasure, I'm sorry, the auditor's office, and I think mandating annual audits of what we're doing, both on the programmatic side. We need to see what's working. I don't think that these are one-off programs. And we've done a lot of that, and they're all good things to do, but we don't have a comprehensive strategy to really look at what young people need to be successful in, in school and career and in life. So those are my suggestions. I have not gone out, we only saw this, somebody said this, announced this a month ago, but we only started to see details three days ago. So this is really three days of work. What I'd also expect and hope for is that we can work with our community if we're going to come back, if, if this goes on the ballot tonight, which I'm assuming it will, but and we have a chance to come back and really look at it and flesh it out more where it needs a little bit more flesh, I would hope that we can work with these young people, depending on if they want to and if Measure G passes or not. So for me, at this point, there's... So for me, at this point, there's things that, there's information that I need before I could get on board on something like this. So, one is, I want to show respect for all of the young people who worked for months and months and knocked on doors. I know how hard that is. You took this into your own hands. As we think about youth engagement and youth voice across this nation, I'm really, for whatever it means, I am so proud of you guys for doing this work, even though I didn't agree with you on a few pieces of this initiative. You've taken it into your own hands and said, "We're going to accomplish this." So give yourself a hand, because I think you guys did a great job. But I want to look at whatever happens next week, what happens with Measure G, if that goes forward or not. I think, Mr. Mayor, either way, you're going to get enough votes to move forward after that. We've had that discussion, but I think you can count to at least five either way.
Hope I can count a little higher, but...
I said at least five either way, so I'm very comfortable if we waited and saw what happened and then decided what we needed to do. I want to see if this gets amended and a lot of these things get embedded into the initiative. I think that's really important. And I want to see the efficiency study, because I am a budget person, and I don't want to put us in a position where we can't sell the housing bonds. So that's incredibly important. I understand that. But until we see all the information, I'm not ready to go forward on it. So that is it for me.
Can I just, I just want to thank you very much for, again, Jay, being so thoughtful, really, and, first of all, I just want to say one thing about, because the comments have been made, and you alluded to it a little bit, about the last, well, we're only seeing this the last couple days, the last couple of months, the youth have been working for a long time. My alternative proposal is based upon Measure G. We took your work product. We took your work, and yes, we changed it in the way that we've had an honest discussion about tonight, but it's based upon the work that you did. Secondly, in terms of my initial look at this, and I know we had a chance to talk very briefly before the meeting, there are two issues that I think would require a lot more, would require more thought for me. The maintenance of effort issue and how to base that. And two, whether or not new taxes, for example, would go, would then be part of this initiative in terms of the base. I want to think about those two things. Other than those two things, though, everything else that you recommended here, I can tell you as the mayor, with only one vote, that I would strongly support to bring back and change, amend tonight's charter amendment in, in March, or April, or May, whatever, as quick, as quick as we can, to actually incorporate all this into an implementing ordinance, or whatever, whatever was required. So I just want to give you, in terms of your own thought and your own vote here, I just want to give you some public feedback here, that I think what you have done here would be, would be very helpful and additive to the work we've done over the last month, based upon the work that the young people did and the Measure G proponents. There's two issues I think bear more discussion, but everything else here...
And I think, I think a discussion around new tax, I mean, we've done a lot of new taxes. I don't see it happening for a while, so that's certainly a discussion to be had.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any more stark statement that we can make than around this maintenance of effort. If we say police and fire are more important, that is a message to this community.
Let's, let's, I just want to give you my, my, I'm open to that. I just want to say that you've added in a very positive way to, to what the, what the end product might look like. So thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. So I actually have a lot of thoughts on this today, but my first thought is, what a great city we live in, and what a great night, because even though some people came up and had, you know, harsh words for the council, and, or either way, we're not here deciding whether to help kids or not help kids. We're here deciding which way we think is best to help kids. Either way, we're going to do something more for kids than we've ever done before. No matter what happens tonight, both proposals do more than the city has ever done before. And I too am very proud of the youth who've worked across the city to gather signatures and be advocates and come here, and this isn't the first council meeting for most of you, and this, you're right, the mayor's proposal wouldn't exist without your proposal. But a lot of times, that's what happens in politics. One of us brings something forward, everybody else contributes to it. It's not exactly what you proposed at first. It's been added to by everybody. That's democracy. That's how you bring more people into the fold. I can tell you that for me personally, my biggest issue with Measure G has always been having nothing to do with the youth, having everything to do with the service provision. Meaning, Measure G, for me, is about giving money to nonprofits to serve youth. And I've been on this council dais for a long time. There are great nonprofits in Sacramento, and we work hard to give them money, often. However, in down times, the city doesn't cut police and fire. I know everyone wants to pit police and fire here against kids. It's not true. I've been here long enough to sit through lots and lots of cuts. You know what the first things cut were? Pools, community centers, youth programs. We lost the entire golf department, parks department, and libraries. You know what those all are? Youth programs. So for me, this has always pitted youth against youth, just in two different forms. Youth being served by the library, youth being served by the parks department, youth being served in community centers, youth being served at pools, youth in summer programs, youth in fourth R, youth in the START program, versus youth at the Roberts Family Community Center, youth at East Bay Asian, youth at YMCA, youth at a nonprofit. Both are important, and there's room for us to do both, but I don't want to put us in a situation where in a down economy, we're cutting the library's literacy programs so that we can continue to pay to the nonprofits to serve kids in another manner in the city. We have to find a balance there. And that's why I'm excited about the mayor's proposal. I think he gets us closer to that balance, much closer. And I, I also take a bit of umbrage, maybe it's just because, for me personally, I can only speak for myself, like the mayor, I'm just one vote, but I've been up here for nine years, and I fought so hard for youth programs. I've personally carried two school bond measures. I'm not in charge of the schools. I'm not on the school board. I've never even been on the school board. But I did both of them in my name, raised all the money and ran the ballots out of my house. Why? Because I felt like Natomas Unified School District needed two bonds. You know, we've built several schools with those dollars, and made improvements to every single campus in Natomas. And I'm very proud of that. I fought extremely hard for a library measure, too, and we saved three libraries from closing. None of them were in my district, two of them were in Allen's, and one was in District Eight. None of them were mine. But I fought really hard and raised all the money and, and ran that program so that we wouldn't close any libraries. When the pools got closed, the two council members that raised the most money were from District Seven and District One. Guess which districts don't have swimming pools? District Seven and District One. But we raised all the money. Why? Because I couldn't stand the idea of Meadowview pool closing. At that time, that was Bonnie Pennell's big, you know, component for summer for kids. We fought so hard. There are two former school board members up here. Rick Jennings has spent his entire life fighting for kids. All of it. The mayor is the biggest champion for youth programs to ever come through the city council. He started the START program. Eric Garas' key issue is daycare and childcare, working for kids. Larry Carr was a school teacher. Allen spends his entire salary, not on himself but on his district, primarily kids, sending Grant High School cheerleaders uniforms, sending Grant marching band back to Washington, D.C. I watch him spend tens of thousands of his own dollars every year in his district for kids. Councilmember Hanson championed the LGBTQ youth teen center. Councilmember Chenier started summer at City Hall, a really terrific program that gives kids credit and access to city services, and they learn so much. And we all pitched in when SAC City Unified couldn't afford it on their own. We all went back and brought resources to the table. Councilmember Harris has been an extraordinary champion in Northgate and Gardenland. He's won awards given to him from nonprofits there that appreciate his help and his service and his willingness to go out and raise money for Stanford Settlement, for the greenhouse. We all have done so much. And this isn't like $5,000 here, $10,000 here. The city currently spends $36 million a year on youth programs. Thirty-six million. That's 7.6%. When the mayor says "maintenance of effort," and you hear that term and you're not sure what he's talking about, that's the term he's talking about. He's talking about taking that number over the average of the last five years and ensuring that whatever his proposal is, is on top of that. Because we don't want to close libraries and pools and community centers. That affects so many people. And we do still want to do more for kids and nonprofits. And so this is a way to achieve both of those goals without putting ourselves in a position where we're sitting up here at this dais and we're choosing which youth program to cut. I can tell you that it would be youth programs cut, because it was last time, even when we tried very hard for it not to be. Black Child Legacy is a perfect example. We didn't have Measure G money, and we barely had any money. But Councilmember Jennings made darn sure that we passed Black Child Legacy, and we paid for it, and we contributed in. And it's bearing tremendous fruit. Every member of this dais has contributed in massive ways. I personally have a youth advisory committee with 800 kids in it. I sustain 800 kids every year in my district in my youth advisory committee. How did I do it? I went out and found funding in the city to hire two positions to help me do youth programs. The kids in that program averaged 30 hours a year of participation in this community. Those are the types of programs that will go away if we don't have enough funding on the city side of the house. That's 800 kids. The literacy programs at the library literally touch on tens of thousands of youth every year. They do high school diplomas. That is the place where anyone can use the internet for free. That is the place for all of the early learning. There are tens of thousands of kids that participate in summer reading, helping us close the achievement gap across the city. Those are really important goals, too, and things that I ran for office to absolutely fight for, and I don't want to lose the opportunity to do that. So tonight, I'm going to make the motion to move the mayor's proposal forward, the SAC Youth Enrichment Fund. I don't often agree with him. If you pay attention to council meetings, it's kind of rare, as Rob Fong pointed out, for us to agree. But I too want to do more for youth, and I too want to honor the work that you kids have put in to get us this far. But I want to do it in a way that you still have public pools to go to, and you still have public community centers, and we can still do things like the Free RT program for kids that Councilmember Chenier championed. We have all championed youth efforts, and we'll continue to do that. The proof is in the $36 million payout that we have done in the last year for kids, which is a huge, huge number. I too fought for Measure U. I too, my face was on flyers, too. I hosted town hall forums. My council district voted overwhelmingly to support Measure U. Overwhelmingly. And contrary to public opinion, not a single dollar on my aquatic facility came out of Measure U funds. I know people like to say it did. It did not. Right? And out of a 40-some million dollar project, the city only put $12 million in, and it did not come from Measure U. So I think we can do both. We're a big city. We can build pools, we can build B Street Theater, we can build Powerhouse Science Center. The mayor's affordable housing bond that he's moved forward is so important. It's not just affordable housing. Has a library in Del Paso Heights in it that I want to build badly. It has improvements for Franklin Boulevard and Northgate Boulevard. I want to do that. You know what's not in it? District One. And I don't care, because the rest of the city needs that investment, and kids need affordable houses to live in with their parents. And we have a housing crisis. And the first casualty of this would be that bond, and I'm not willing to jeopardize that. I want to do both. I want to help you, and I want to do affordable housing. I want Del Paso Heights to get a library. I want to keep every library open. I want to keep every pool open. I want to build more community centers on Northgate Boulevard. I think Oak Park should have a library, too, McWorthy. In fact, we should put that in. I don't know why we ever sold the one to McGeorge. It should still be there. It could be doing so much good in that community. So I'm going to support the mayor's proposal tonight. I hope way more than five of my colleagues do. And Jay, I actually think everything on this is very reasonable. I would have the same two questions the mayor has, but I'm not a blanket no right out of the gate. I want to learn more. But everything else on here is very reasonable, and many of these things would be improvements to Measure G as well. I think this is fantastic, and I feel confident that before June, we could iron this out. I hope you will support the mayor. I think this is a strong, bold move for kids, and I'm proud of the kids for getting us here, and I'm proud of the city of Sacramento and the mayor for finding balance. Mayor, you have my support.
Thank you. Thank you. Member Ashby. Vice Mayor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. That's a pretty tough act to follow, Angelique. You pretty much covered every point, but, but I would like to add a little bit. The $36 million that we spend on youth annually, that Pro Tem Ashby alluded to, doesn't include an awful lot of things that do touch the lives of youth. For instance, we just voted for $5.1 million to put up homeless housing for transition-age youth. I myself have spent something like $6 million building new parks and renovating parks just in District Three, as my colleagues have done in their districts. We do spend an awful lot of money on youth. Is it enough? Well, that could be a personal decision for each person. But the fact of the matter is, no matter what amount of money we spend on youth, it has to be fiscally sustainable. There is no other option. And to my mind, Measure G is simply not fiscally sustainable. Councilmember Chenier mentioned the efficiency studies coming up and the Management Partners report. Well, I've seen it, and it does not prognosticate a happy fiscal future for the city of Sacramento. And in fact, the mayor read a few numbers. As far as efficiencies, if we're to truly get efficiencies with our budget, we're going to have to make very difficult political decisions, like doing a charter change to get rid of binding arbitration for bargaining units. That's really a tough one, but that's where the efficiency really is. Will this council do it? I can't say for sure. We may be forced to look at that as our budget squeezes tighter and tighter. But one thing I will tell you, if you look at our budget projections for the next 10 to 12 years, we are in a squeeze play. After that, things open up a bit, because we've overcome a lot of our budget problems with pensions and our pension liabilities. But our primary job is to manage the budget, to, to do the best job we can to spend taxpayer money and keep ourselves fiscally sound. We have many problems that we need to tackle. Right now, I agree that homelessness and housing are the biggest problems facing the city. That doesn't mean we turn our back on youth while we address those issues. You know, the library can always use more money, and frankly, our library system does a tremendous amount for the youth in this city and has been neglected over the years, in my opinion. You know, to do ballot box budgeting is very difficult. I also appreciate the effort that, that people made to go collect these signatures, but other special interest groups could do the same thing. And if we start partitioning our budget, then the money will be out of the hands of the city council, and frankly, the city would be a shambles if we do that. It's a very dangerous precedent to set. The 7.5% we spend on youth, again, does not encompass nearly all the things that touch youth. And quite frankly, keeping our youth safe also affects youth very positively. You know, police and fire, public safety, is a basic duty that we have a council, as a council, have to maintain. We have to keep our city safe, we have to keep our roads passable, we have to keep our pipes flowing water and sewage. These are all the mundane things that this council has to tackle, and we deal with many, many millions of dollars. The proposal that the mayor has come up with, I believe, does support youth and is fiscally sustainable. And so I'm definitely in favor of it. I really feel that Measure G would absolutely endanger our ability to bond for a housing trust fund. And again, I find that to be a crucial situation for our city. And, and while, you know, the idea of just supporting youth is immensely popular, there is no data that says that funding nonprofits is a better way to support youth than, say, the city-funded programs that we already invest in and invest in highly. We could invest in them more. And with the mayor's proposal, we can do that. I believe our priorities are intact. I, I don't see a problem. I know that every person on this council supports youth. I know that every person on this council supports public safety. We are charged with running the city and keeping it functioning. I just don't believe that we are neglecting youth. You know, there is a number, some magic number out there that is just the right number to spend on youth, youth programs, youth initiatives. Have we reached it? I think maybe, considering fiscal sustainability. But the mayor wants to take it a little farther, and I support his proposal, and thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this very big issue, big discussion. I think the mayor has taken another step forward in his approach. I think, however, in this particular case, as difficult as it is to not recognize the mayor with a yes vote on issues, particularly big issues, you know, I align myself with Councilman Shinier on this issue. I think Councilman Shinier has a long history on this issue. He has a depth of knowledge. I think the analysis that he did on the mayor's proposal, in addition to the work that he's done with the young people, and really, you know, I'm really a bleeding heart for young people. I think the work that the young people did going out and getting the signatures need to be rewarded unless there's something better that we can bring forward. And currently, I don't think that we have a better proposal. I do know that it challenges the council because we are constantly pulled by a variety of people and groups and made aware of priorities that others believe are more important. And this is really a reflection of priorities, irrespective of what we say. Where the money goes really illustrates where the priorities are. And I believe that in cases like this, this, to me, is an extreme case because disproportionately young people of color and poor young people are going to be impacted the most. If you're in more affluent communities, more affluent families, they have more resources to do things to help support their young people. In communities like the one that I represent, Del Paso Heights in North Sacramento, we don't have as many options. We don't have as many resources to work with. So if we get $100 and every other council district gets $100, to me, that's not equitable. And so we need, there needs to be this catch-up period that we have yet to do, and I think we're going to continue see what we see in these underserved communities of higher unemployment, higher crime rates, higher high school dropout rates, because we're not investing in the kinds of things that were available when I was a kid growing up in Del Paso Heights. I think this proposal takes a step forward, but I think Measure G is actually two or three steps ahead of that. And I think Measure G, let me finish. Measure G, because I'm going to try to be brief. Measure G is going to force this council to do more. I think the mayor made a very good effort. In my opinion, it's not enough right now. But I hear the mayor saying he's willing to continually work on this, and maybe we'll get there where I can support it. But as it stands right now, I'm going to be aligned with Councilman Shinier, and I'm going to support the young people. I'm going to support Measure G. And I feel very confident, though, that this council will continue to work. And if we don't bring something forward that the majority of us can support, then hopefully the people will end up supporting Measure G. But tonight, I'm going to, I'm going to vote with Councilman Shinier. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Warren. Councilman Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, first, I want to take this time to thank all the youth who've actually come out here. They've got other priorities, their schools, their family, and they're out here today. I've seen them walking out in the community. I've seen them hustling not just during this campaign, but through the development of this. So I think they deserve a big round of applause for everything that they've been doing out here today. And in my own neighborhood, in Tahoe Park, I've been driving, walking around, preaching walking myself. And, you know, if the number of lawn signs was anything to judge a, you know, how well a campaign was going at that time, I would be glad that I wasn't running against that candidate, because that's more lawn signs in my neighborhood than I've seen in any other type of election. So the fact that the community, the neighbors out there, and the kids have been walking shows that you have been out there talking to neighbors. And for, you know, in my neighborhood, people get, you know, touchy about their lawn, you know? Even if they don't mow it often, you don't want anything on their lawn. So the fact that you can get so many lawn signs out there, that means that you guys have been doing your job in a campaign to be persuasive. First, I want to start off by saying that I don't think anyone here has ever said that they're a fan of ballot box budgeting. And, one, the criticism has been is that we have to do something different because right now, there's a measure on the ballot that's ballot box budgeting. I just want to remind folks that, you know, even this proposal, the mayor's proposal, is ballot box budgeting. So let's
Guilty.
Let's put that out there. So, you know, so I think that we should just eliminate that. Second, one, I also, I'm like Jay in this one. I can read the tea leaves, you know? I can see where this is going and what needs to happen. And then, you know, rather than being just a contrarian, it's how do you help provide the best possible outcome? How do you ensure that you're making the best public policy decision and doing your part? Much like other council decisions that I've disagreed with and the council has moved forward on them, I've done my due diligence as a policymaker to make sure that we take those into account. So I want to go back to some of these issues here that I think Jay highlighted with the mayor's proposal, because that's really the question today, about should we move forward with this proposal today? You know, the other measure, it's already on the ballot. Voters can decide on Tuesday, or they may already have, what to do about that. But today, the question is, what do we do about the mayor's proposal? Number one, I think the point about ensuring accountability through performance and finance audits, that's clearly an oversight that's missing in this proposal. I think it's something
My proposal.
Yes.
And in Measure G.
And in Measure G, but today, we're talking about this proposal, correct? That's correct. Good.
No, no, well, my, the proposal calls for audits, calls for annual audits. So it's not, it's, we actually took the flaw in Measure G and tried to strengthen it. Maybe not enough. Jay puts more meat on the bones.
And I like that.
Yes.
And so let's, so I think more meat on the bones is better. Right? Second, we want to provide, I think, something that is in Measure G that I think we want to bring out here, provide explicit lists of non-eligible expenditures. That's, I think, we should be thoughtful about what are those key pieces. Again, creating more accountability and transparency through a multi-year strategy. We know that if we're going to be effective in the development of youth, it's not a one-time thing that changes their situation. It's the building of pedagogy. It's the encouragement. It's the mentorship programs. All of those things that build up to change the impact of a youth. So thinking about multi-year plans is important to have in this piece, because if not, it's back to the criticism that I have, where sometimes we do fund youth programs, and I acknowledge it now, that it's sometimes it's just warehousing of kids. And that's not, I think, the best use of our funds. We have to make sure that we're using our funds to be the most productive. I do agree that our staff, you know, we ask a lot of our city staff, and even when we were applying for the kids to college, we didn't have the staff to actually, you know, be competitive, to do the matching. So we need to have that component in there. So I want to highlight those points there. All of those points, none of them, I think, are ones that I think anyone has objection to. I think there are points here, as you mentioned, that there's more thought that needs to happen, like the issue of justifying the maintenance of effort. So, and, you know, Mr. Mayor, I think you and Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Ashby are earnest in saying that you want to put this on the November ballot. And so whether we act today or we act, as Councilmember Ashby said, by June, then there is time to get this right. So my, I'm going to propose a substitute motion here, that we actually use the public vetting process of the Law and Legislation Committee to be able to answer these good, solid questions. And that motion may fail. That motion may fail.
Second.
It's been seconded. But I want to make sure that we have that. And one of the things that we've used in the Law and Leg process, when we've brought an item forward, many times, it's in a concept form. So we bring the concept out, and we give discussion, and then we build on it. So I think we could have, we could have moved on this a little faster if we would have used that. So I, this, like, again, I read the tea leaves. This measure may fail. I'm not necessarily opposed to your measure, but I do think that giving it the vetting process is important, so.
Okay, so you've got a substitute motion, a second on the table. And when we finish the comment, we'll take up the sub-motion first. And then, if it fails, you'll have, everyone will have the opportunity to vote on the main motion.
Good.
Correct. Okay. Councilman Hanson.
Thanks, Mayor. I think just to start off, a lot of people have thanked the youth for being here, and I think that is absolutely appropriate. But one of the things that most of you don't realize is, many of us sitting up here came through adversity as young people to sit up here, experienced homelessness, experienced poverty, experienced divorces, single-parent challenges. And I look, I know Eric's story very well, because he and I sort of grew up through this process. I met him as he was kind of trying to finish at SAC State while he worked as a janitor. And, you know, as a farm worker as a kid, Angelique didn't tell her story tonight, but as a single mom, as a teenager, and having to manage that, and, you know, I know every one of us has stories. So there is this thing that happened, that's happening around the country right now where we other everyone. Everyone has to be different than us. But there's so much commonality in this room. I look at RIVCA, and I know that the programs that the library does for young people are meant for everyone who's in this room supporting Measure G, as well as for those people who may not understand the merits. And so I don't think we're going to get anywhere as a city council or as a city unless we find a way to work together. And that's true of the building trades who help disadvantaged youth get apprenticeships and high-skill jobs. It's true of so many people on both sides of this equation. And it hurts our community when we can't find ways to work together. When Jim Ketti, who was one of the leaders of this, came to my office to talk about Measure G, I encouraged him to sit down with the mayor and try to work this out. At that time, I was told that that wasn't an option that the proponents were interested in. But I think because it was placed on the ballot, we are here. And we are here also because amending the city charter is one of the most dramatic responses to any problem that we ever have. And because it requires another vote of the people, and it's like our city's constitution, it is a very significant thing that should not be done lightly. I, in the budget proposal last year that helped bring the council together, I proposed $10 million a year in a community grant program that would be focused on youth. And it would be for three years. And I think Councilmember Shinier grabbed some of those ideas through a multi-year strategic plan and a grant-making infrastructure. And so I think those are really good ideas. And we didn't end up, because of the Measure U Commission being set up and Ms. Kofers, the chair of it, we wanted to respect them, so we didn't put that specificity into the process. But I think now, this conversation has to drive us back to that specificity. How are we going to put whatever amount of money? I was comfortable with $10 million a year. I was comfortable, giving us, though, the flexibility to figure out how to do more for youth in the process that could be sustainable for not only our city departments, particularly parks and libraries, but also for the nonprofits that we partner with. This last budget year, though, the one that Measure G uses as the base budget, is a historically high amount of investment in youth. We did more in last year's budget because we had more resources than we've been able to do before. Councilmember Shinier drove many of those investments, as did Councilmember Gera, as did Councilmember Jennings, Mayor. And we all kind of tried to figure out how we could do the most for the kids that we want to serve. And those at-risk kids were at the top of the priority list. It's the same with the Aquatic Center. When I asked that we have a program to focus on at-risk youth, to give them free access, working with the school district, citywide. So I don't think this is a place where there isn't an opportunity for people to work together and find a better way to create a sustainable process. But I also know that the most we hear about up here is homelessness, is housing. We hear a lot of need for traffic safety, Vision Zero, Safe Roots to School. We hear a lot about needing to beef up the programs we're doing in the schools around arts education, because the school districts aren't doing that. And one of my biggest concerns is that if Measure G passes, and I know we're not talking about Measure G, Councilmember Shinier, it means that we can't do many of those other things that we also promised during the Measure U renewal campaign. And as we are often forced to do, we have to do many different things at the same time and try to do them very well. And we're not going to please everyone. But I do think, Mayor, and I told you this, I don't think it will be surprise to you, as much as I think that the Measure G structure is one that concerns me, here having a very significant charter amendment where we are asked to put on the ballot tonight for the very first time that we see it, and I only saw it when it was published last Thursday, when the rest of you saw it, it seems rushed. It seems rushed because we haven't had a council workshop. And, Mr. Gera, I might be willing to support your substitute if we could have a council workshop on it. But even if we pass this proposal tonight, what I'd like is a commitment that we come back and do that workshop process
Yes.
So we can work through some of those things.
Yes.
Because in the end, this vote cannot be definitive tonight. Because if it is definitive and we all walk away and don't talk anymore, we're going to all be worse off for it.
Is it a substitute? I mean, uh...
I'll come back to that.
Yeah, yeah.
We are not going to be a better community if we go to our corners and stop talking to each other. And so if Measure G passes, we're still going to have those workshops. If Measure G fails, this is an alternative that still gives us the chance to do these investments. And so I think we have to find a way to come together. So much of our politics right now is about zero-sum. You know, you have to dislike somebody, you have to disagree and never talk to them. We cannot be a city about that. We cannot be a zero-sum city. So however we finesse this, I think much of what Councilmember Shinier proposed in his memo is really intriguing. Not all of it. You know, we all throw our ideas at the wall, and some things stick.
There's nothing on there that I throw against the wall.
And Mayor, no offense to your authorship of the amendment and to those who worked with you on it, but I think there's still a need to do a lot of work
Sure.
on the charter amendment. So what I would ask is that maybe we have a motion tonight to pass the policy but not call for the election, and then come back with a better policy that reflects some of these ideas, gives the public a chance to give input. I think in the end, the same result will happen, but we'll feel better about the product and the process if we have that path.
Can I, can I, go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I assure you, because here's what
Yeah. His mic? Yeah.
My mic's on. Here's what I know about politics and about political bodies. The good, the best settlement, so to speak, now to use a courthouse analogy, are made at the courthouse steps, right? Because once the G verdict is rendered, I guarantee you, there will be less of an incentive to workshop and make any kind of a decision to consider an alternative. And by the way, there's, I can argue very credibly, because I don't know what's going to happen with G. It seems like a robust campaign out there on both sides. I guarantee you, if it goes down, there is going to be a lot of goodwill and effort and workshopping and all that to put an alternative on the ballot, but it is going to be much, much harder. Some of our friends out in the audience who are standing behind the alternative might, might have second thoughts if G fails. I just know it. And so you can have it both ways in a different way, Councilmember Hanson, which is to vote to back the mayor on this one and to put this on the ballot with the charter amendment, but with my guarantee to you, with blood oath, that we'll set a date back, and you can pick the date, in March or April, to have the exact workshop and then make any changes that we believe as five votes, we could and should make. But if we don't take an action tonight, G passes, then that's great, and that will have a particular set of consequences. If G fails, this discussion, I'm telling you, is going to If G fails, this discussion, I'm telling you, is going to have much less resonance to do a ballot measure, because Eric Gara is right. Let's just call it what it is. My alternative, it's ballot box budgeting. It ain't very pretty itself. It puts real money and no fun, by the way, real money, but it just allows us to maintain a balance. So I'm sorry, you know better than anybody, this is imperfect, and e, even the process. But tonight is the night to make, to, to put the alternative on the ballot, and then to, to, uh, make me live up to my word, which I always do, that we will in fact not only have the workshop, but we can tee this up for a set of decisions. If you want to work off Councilmember Chenier's memo, uh, in teeing up those decisions and anything else you want to add, I'm fine with that. Um, but I wouldn't, I'm not for kind of doing a half-measure tonight because, um, we got plenty of chances to get it right. And by the way, I don't think, this has not been an angry debate. It's not an angry debate. This is a good debate. I think this is healthy in and of itself. I don't see us in our corners, like, all fighting with each other. We're all trying to grapple with, um, the same end goal. We're just talking about how to do it. But I, I know instinctively that tonight is the night that we at least, um, put this on, because then it'll incentivize us to make the changes and to continue, uh, engaging in a more, in a most serious way on these sets of issues. I just wanted to respond.
So, so, Mayor, it is incredibly unique and unheard of that for a charter amendment, we would see it in one meeting and vote to put on the ballot in the same meeting. And I, I take your word on coming back, but I don't have, because the motions that have been flying and everything else, I don't, I think most people here feel like we're being forced to buy a car that we don't yet know if we can afford the loan on it. And so I, I, I think that the, the car pay, or, sorry, the, um, caveat emptor, the buyer-beware issue, is my concern. So how we thread that needle, I'm going to let the rest of my colleagues give some ideas around.
Okay.
But, but I, I believe that we need to find this a, alternative, and I think you're, the basis of it is in your proposal. But I also believe that the process has to be worthwhile, so that people who are sitting in this audience, whether you're wearing yellow shirts or not, feel good about the end result. And that could mean they succeed in passing Measure G and have to fight this at the ballot. It could mean that Measure G fails, and this goes on the ballot, and they have to decide a very difficult thing about how to help support it if they want it. But, you know, we do a lot of very difficult things, and I, I think this is a deadline that feels a little bit forced. So I'll just say that. But if in the end, it comes down to five to four, then I will, I will vote to move this forward.
Thank you.
For a conversation, but I, I won't be somebody who wants to see this unnecessarily rushed.
Fair enough. Thank you. Okay. The board's lighting up, and I have a few more comments to make here, so it's okay. Um, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Very interesting discussion. Um, you know, thus far, I haven't heard a second for your proposal to move it forward.
Please, yeah.
And I, I do second your, your proposal.
And Councilman Gara says?
But with the caveat that, of course, we'll discuss this and manage it and, and make it the best thing it can be moving forward. To carry on with your analogy, Steve, from, from my point of view, Measure G is an unknown card that we know we can't afford. So that's my two cents.
So, Councilmember Gara, just for technicality, because we've got our attorneys in it, you, you're okay since, with your motion being a substitute motion?
That's fine.
Sure. Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Ashby's motion, seconded now by Councilmember Harris, is the main motion. Okay. Uh, Councilmember Jennings.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, one of the things that, as I look at the ki, young people in the audience who have done so much work on Measure G, I don't want them to walk out of here believing for one minute that they are not a priority, and that they are not a positive choice. And I think Councilmember Ashby did a great job of talking about every council member on this dais that supports our youth and supports programs and services for our youth. And I think that we continue, we can and will continue to do that. But I just don't ever want you to walk away thinking that you are not a priority for this council, right? And I'd heard that earlier, and I thought about that, and it kind of hurt me, so I know it hurts you. And I just don't want you to, to, to leave out of here thinking that, because I know everybody on this council as well, and I know that we proved how mu, how important youth are by our actions. We spent $36 million last year on our youth. $36 million, 7.6% of the budget. Even you, as you go out and ask for 2.5%, we're talking about 12, 12 million dollars. We spent $36 million last year for our youth. That says that you are a priority, and you will always be a priority, because there's a saying that the future of children is always today, for tomorrow is too late. So you are the future, and you are today. Okay? And you will sit up here tomorrow, and you'll be making these decisions. So the little man over there in the red sweat, sweat jacket, sweatcoat, he was asleep a few minutes ago, and he almost made me want to go to sleep.
How do you call him out like that?
Because I got to, because I wanted to go to sleep too, right? And I saw him over there sneezing, snoozing, and I said, "Man, I wish I could be," which means we've been up here way too long, right? So I know they're saying the same thing. Are they ever going to get done? Are they ever going to get done? So I'm going to try to be brief. Um, I am going to support this proposal tonight, and I'm going to support it, um, as long as I know that Jay's work, which we've already agreed to, is going to ha, we're going to have an opportunity to come back and make sure that that's a part of this proposal.
Yes.
And, and, and I'm going to support it. And I think it's a good support, um, for us, because we know we can't afford Measure G. We know that. This allows us, in the event that it passes or not passes, it gives us options. And it gives us options to further support our youth. And so I am going to support the proposal. I'm going to put that on, on the table right now. Um, it forces this council to do more, and I heard that earlier. And that's what we will do. We will work to make sure that this is perfect, that this is right, and that the, what the product that's in front of us now that doesn't meet all of our needs, we will work together to make sure that this product meets all of our needs, and more importantly, meets the needs of all the youth that are a priority for all, every single one of us. And here's what I know about the budget process. We proved last year with $36 million that youth are a priority. And if we need to go into the budget process again and spend $36 million or $40 million, this council will make the right decisions to do what it needs to do. And we will make those decisions at the time of the budgeting, right? And so I'm not a fan of ballot box budgeting myself. I understand that the mayor's proposal is a part of that, but I'm not a fan of that. I don't want to tie the council's hands as far as the current Measure G project is, uh, product is concerned. I don't want to do that. I don't want to tie the hands of future council members for 12 years. I don't know if any of us will be here in 12 years, but I don't want to tie the hands of this council or future council members in doing anything like that. Because once you start doing it, you not only do it for youth, you start doing it for other departments as well. So I don't want to do that. So I will support the mayor's proposal. I will support coming back and working together to make it right, to make sure we have that workshop, to make sure that we get all the elements in it that we all need in order to feel good about the proposals on the table, and you have my support.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Ashby.
Yeah, Mayor, just to be really clear, and because I'm listening to my colleagues, and I went early on, and I think Councilmember Gara and Jennings and, uh, Hanson have made really solid points. I am, I think it would make sense, and if Jeff will oblige me with his second, to say if we pass the motion tonight, that we come back immediately with a workshop, and that we commit to looking at not only Jay's proposals, but anything that anybody else or the community has to propose to us about how we might enhance this, uh, prior to it needing to be on the ballot. But I do think that it is really important that we send the signal tonight, which is our last chance, to voters next week, that we're going to do something for youth, no matter what. So I, and I, and I would just caution this to those of you who are kind of on the fence up here. Uh, the mayor and I have worked together here to build a really broad coalition. I'm not sure that broad coalition stays intact two weeks from now, and maybe you can dismiss that and say, "Hey, okay, we don't need it." But, um, I haven't done this for 30 years. I have done it for almost 10. He's right. Tonight is the night where you get the faces in this audience all together. Two weeks from now, you don't have the faces in this audience all together. I know that, and you do too. So I'm really hoping you all will support that motion for the mayor.
I just want to say one more, um, gratitude. Um, the young people could not have gone out and knocked on all the doors that they knocked on without the help of caring, loving adults. And, and we have not said anything about the work that you did to lead them to do the work that they did. And I know it takes the adults, the young people, in order to lead our kids, and you have led them well. And I just want to stop for a minute and say thank you to each one of you who helped make it possible for our kids. Okay? Thank you. Give them a round of applause, if you will, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Councilman Carr.
Well, this has been a lively discussion.
Of course it has been, in a good way.
So, uh, first of all, I want to recognize, uh, Jay for what he's put together here. It's an outstanding package of proposals and something that we definitely need to consider. Uh, I think we must be mindful, as some people have said, about the signal that we may be sending to our young people who collected the ballot, the ballots, the signatures on the initiative process. What we're being asked to decide today, if, if you haven't been following this conversation, really, is two things. One, the calling for an election on November the 3rd, that's the first thing we're asked to decide. And the second, whether or not we want to submit a proposal for a Sacramento Youth Enrichment Fund. There's nothing in what we're deciding about Measure U or anything else.
G.
Measure G, nothing about our backgrounds, nothing about how we grew up. That's the only two things we're being asked to decide. So I'm going to focus my comments on those things. Uh, first of all, I am for, for calling for a, an election on November the 3rd. Do we need to separate that vote, or how do we?
No, it's going to be, what's one vote, one motion.
So if the, if the motion on the, uh, Youth Enrichment Fund fails, then we have to come back and do a second vote on?
No, so there's a substitute motion where Councilmember Geta is asked that the, that the thing I'm asking for tonight, which is to put, uh, the alternative measure on the November ballot, that instead it be delayed and go through the lawn-ledge process and come back sometime in the spring. If that motion is defeated, then the main motion is to actually tonight, put the, uh, alternative measure on the November ballot with a commitment, a public commitment from me and my colleagues who are in support, that we come back at a date certain, not three months from now, to consider potential amendments to.
I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is, if that motion is defeated as well.
Well, then we're going to go home.
We don't have a November the 3rd election.
Then there's no November the 3rd election.
We'll call it later.
I insist on a November the 3rd election.
Then you know where you're going to vote. We, we, I'm seeking to put this alternative
on the November 3rd election, but promise to have a, a, a debate and a vote and a discussion about the various amendments that have been put, put after the fact. Because if we don't put the, if we don't pass my motion tonight, this will all kind of die a quiet death after the fact, after March the 3rd. That's my concern.
I understand.
And I think it's valid.
And, and I still don't think you picked up on my concern.
I'm sorry, I'm not missing it. I apologize.
We have a, a primary that's coming up in March.
Yes.
If no one wins 51%, then we, they will have to have another election in November.
No one. Yeah, a council candidate.
Yes.
There will be a November election, by definition.
It looks like this is what is being called for.
A presidential election. A presidential election. So, so there wa, there's an election no matter what. That's...
We're voting to put something on the ballot, not the ballot itself.
Okay, it says, "One, calling for a general municipal election to be held on November the 3rd, 2020, for the purpose of electing officers as required by the laws of the state of California."
Right.
Related to charter cities.
So here's the way it works. Officially, the city has to declare sometime that it is going to be part of the November election process.
Exactly.
That's what it says. And of course, we will do that now, or we can do it later. I'm asking that we do it now, because I want to put this alternative on the ballot for November now, for all the reasons that have articulated and we have been discussing here tonight.
So you answered my question. If all of the measures fail, we have to bring back a separate?
Correct.
That was the original question.
Correct. I'm sorry, you just...
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
The second thing, we got that straight. The second thing that we're being asked to do is to whether or not, uh, we want to put this charter amendment on that November the 3rd election that, uh, we're going to call it either tonight or at some future time. We've seen a number of good suggestions as to what should go into that charter amendment. Uh, as Councilmember Hanson stated, the charter amendment is a huge thing for a city to do. And I'm feeling rushed looking at this. Uh, I just saw Jay's proposals tonight, the fully, uh, the mayor's proposal a couple of days ago, and it looks like we're being asked to not buy a car that we don't know how to pay for, but buying something that we don't even know what it's going to be in the end. What is it going to look like? What is, what's the final product going to be? So I will support the substitute motion. And if the substitute motion fails, uh, I think there's enough incentive to go forward with the main motion, but I will support the substitute motion. I'd rather see a process here. I'd rather see us take a look at this and not be rushed and, and be involved in a shotgun wedding and being forced to make a decision under the gun. We haven't really thought this whole thing through. So that's where I am at this point, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. Councilman Chenier.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to make a couple of points really quickly. Um, a lot of the discussion around Measure G has been around nonprofits, and I want to be really clear that within Measure, Measure G, both nonprofits and city, uh, organizations, departments have the ability to apply for funds. So this is not about just enriching nonprofits. And as long as we have the right auditing and, and evaluation that covers it, uh, we should be fine on that. So I want to be clear on that. The other thing is, I want to talk just for a minute about, um, this $36 million number. My understanding is that was done in about a week, and Dawn, maybe you can nod yes or no on that, more or less. This was a, a quick and dirty number. I don't think it's accurate, but even if, I, I think it's in the ballpark, um, which is fine, but it was done by the departments. We did this when we did Measure Y. We spent about two months trying to track down all these numbers. So this was a quick and dirty. So I know this is being bandied about quite a bit, um, but I'll, I'll give you two things on it. One is, even if it's correct, and I don't want this, this is not about, I, I think we have a great police department, a great fire department. I don't want to pit anyone, but there is, there's scale here. So even if we do 36 million, we spent 273 million on fire and police. 36 million, 13% of what we spent on fire and police. Um, so I just, I think it's important that people think about what the scale is on this. Um, and those were the two points I just wanted to make.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief as well, and I, I was going to say something similar, except for I was going to leave out police and fire, Councilman Chenier, because I don't want to compare necessarily to police and fire. I just want to say that e, even if we are spending 36 million, it's still not enough. I mean, we have young people that have tremendous needs in our community that ha, are not being met. So we need to make it right so that we are having the positive types of impacts on young people that our young people deserve. And so when we stop seeing the pain and suffering in the communities of color and underserved communities, then I think we would have, we would have done our, our rightful duty to the young people in the city of Sacramento. The other thing is that, as it relates to the bonds that people keep talking about, and how much money is going to be available by bonds, we've been in an, in an interest rate environment with declining interest rates. So what that means is that we will, when we bond, we will, the money that we're projecting is low. So we're talking about a, a, a allocation of funds. So we're talking about a allocation of funds that is, right now, it is arbitrarily low. We're going to have more money as it relates to the bonds. Interest rates just went down again this week. And so, and if we look at what we projected in terms of interest rates, when interest rates go down, our bond gets bigger, meaning we're going to have more money to do more things with. And I think that should be part of the analysis as we go forward. Because not only if the money goes up, will we have more money for young people, we will still have more money for police and fire, which seems to be the debate that we're having here on the dice. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Warren. Councilmember Gedda, and then Ashby, then I'm going to make the final comment here. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to, I want to say that for those who are interested or are balancing whether to support the substitute motion, to bring it through the Law and Legislation Committee and go through these recommendations that Councilmember Chenier has proposed, that that action in itself sends a strong signal, I think, to the public, to the youth, and to the voters, that we want to get this right. The substitute motion is intended to send the signal that we want to make sure that what we put in our charter is the best thing. I want to go back to what Councilmember Hanson said. This is a charter amendment, not just a resolution or an ordinance or even a contract that we approve on once. This is a charter amendment, and that has to go to the people. So when we did redistricting and pulled the politics out of redistricting, we did the committee process and community process. When we did our city auditor's charter amendment, we did a committee process and a community process. And when we did our ethics commission, we did a committee process and a community process. So this is just saying that we want to get this right. And let me be clear, I like the mayor's proposal. I think, like as he mentioned, it puts real money on the table. That's an important thing. But there are ways to make it better. So I'll just say that I think the substitute motion doesn't end it. It just says, let's get it right.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Yeah, I think it's time to vote, Mayor. And I know you have a couple of quick comments, but I just wanted to put a date certain for the councilmembers who are on the fence, that we will come back on April 14th, which is the first Tuesday that we have a council meeting in April, for the discussion as a full body council, not law and ledge, because that's three or four members, for the full body council, to discuss this and everybody have input and be open to the public, so everyone can come. And at that point, we can, we can shape this into whatever we want it to be, but still tonight, taking the motion to move forward in November, so.
Thank you.
I concur.
He concurs. Yes, he does. Steve, Councilman Hanson.
Yeah, I'll just be quick. Thank you, Councilmember Ashby. And the reason I asked for a council workshop, so I appreciate you hearing that in my comments, is because repeatedly, we've had such serious issues at law and ledge, and this is probably one of the bigger ones. Councilmember Carr, in particular, has said, you're not on law and ledge. So why didn't we have a workshop on it? And I was thinking about your comments in particular. So I think a full council workshop process is good. And so, Mr. Guerra, if you're willing, I think that that achieves both goals, if you'd be willing to withdraw your substitute. Because it looks like, you know, it looks like there's enough votes, and I'm willing to support the main motion now. And I think it's important that we find a way to come to as much unanimity as possible, to find a way forward together.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Hanson. I appreciate that question. And I'm sitting next to the Chair of Law and Ledge here. And I'm assuming that he would want to make sure that we got to, that the committee process and that the Law and Ledge Committee made sure that the council got a workshop and got a product to the council by April 14th. Am I wagering to say that you would be okay with that, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, yes, okay. So, I mean, since the chairman of the Law and Legislation Committee is saying that we're going to work aggressively to get the measure back before April 14th, I think I'll stick with that, you know?
You're going to stick with your motion.
Stick with the motion.
Okay.
Say really quickly, I also want to make sure, whether we do it in law and ledge or some other format, that, depending on what happens next week and what people's willingness is, we want to invite a lot of the community who's been working.
Of course.
For so long on this. I don't want to do this in a vacuum.
Okay, so my comment here now, first of all, thank you, Mayor Protam, for that last edition, because I think it was obviously important to provide some certainty in terms of a date to Councilmember Hanson and others to say that my word, which you know is good anyways, but it actually puts a date around my word, that we will consider all of this. So thank you for doing that, and I appreciate your attempt there, Councilmember Hanson, at the end, but it's okay. So a couple of things, philosophical and otherwise, I want to get right to the heart of this. What you are all witnessing today may seem confounding to you and maybe troubling to you, because there's a lot of argument, a lot of technicality. What's happening here tonight among very serious people, including yourself, is great. It is great. Because no matter what happens, we are going to collectively advance the youth cause. And you deserve a lot of credit for that, because you've motivated this entire discussion. And this is democracy. I will tell you, nobody should ever show any sympathy or pity to the mayor on this thing, but I just want to tell you my own feeling about some of this, in terms of my own effort, where I've put my heart and soul into. I did an audacious thing as mayor of this city, with the help of my colleagues here, to put forward a risky one cent sales tax measure, Measure U, to fund youth and a lot of other important programs. And I must tell you, since the day that passed, it has been fascinating, it has been great, it has been interesting, and it has been endlessly frustrating. Because everybody now thinks they own it and trying to take it from what I originally intended. And that's just the way that it is. I can't complain about that. I have to stay true to the vision that I put forward, but also recognize that this is democracy. And my colleagues all have their own point of views, and the community has their own point of views. And so I could give up and say, ah, I wish I hadn't done that, or I'm, or I'm not going to do that anymore. But no, I got to be in the fight every single day. And you need to be in the fight every single day, because it's worth it. And you're actually moving the ball in huge and significant ways. This is the messiness of democracy. But it's better that we all get a say here and open, in an open forum, and we get to argue with each other civilly, and then try to come to the best and reasoned conclusion that we can. I'll conclude with some other remarks to the young people, but I want to say to my colleagues here, in a very principled way, what I'm really asking of you is to have it both ways. Some of you have endorsed Measure G, and that's your point of view and your principle. Some of you have opposed it. Okay. I am saying to those who support Measure G, you can still support it. You can support it now. You can support it, you can, if it passes, you can oppose any subsequent measure. But you also run the risk, if Measure G fails, that there won't be an alternative that would have the same coalition of support and less momentum. And so in some ways, by voting to put this on the ballot, you're not negating your support or advocacy for Measure G. Ballot box, I want to talk about ballot box budgeting, and this is for the young people as well, and I, you know, hope everyone will reflect on this. I have gone to the ballot to fund programs in my career, most prominently Proposition 63, the Mental Health Services Act in California. Every time I have done ballot box budgeting, excuse me, every time I have done ballot box budgeting, it is with a revenue source attached to it. So you know what's flawed about Measure G, and I'm sorry, but it is. And what's also less flawed about my alternative is that it seeks to carve out a part of the budget, but it doesn't add any revenue. And by the way, that's not what we do with Measure U. We added a half cent sales tax. And now we have more money to do more things. And so you may feel righteous in your position, because you're fighting for young people, but it doesn't mean the product that you put forward is perfect or the right way to do this. You may be right, however, and Councilmember Chenier and others may be right, that we in fact can do it all. That we can have a set aside for youth, even if it's unfunded. That we can fulfill all of our Measure U priorities, and that we can fulfill our legal responsibilities and our responsibilities to our constituents to fund our basic services. You may be right. But you also may be wrong. Because we start next year with a $21 million deficit. That's just the red ink here. And I'm worried about it. So the burden is on all of us, but especially, I want those who are questioning this tactic, if you will, here today, to think about this. That when you come and you fight for that revitalization strategy on the commercial corridors, and you fight for affordable housing, and you fight for small business assistance, that you're going to have to help me answer all those difficult questions and figure out how we deal with that $21 million deficit, and how in fact, we do it all. Because I'm in the business of governing here. And governing is about making choices. That's the other thing. You're darn right, youth have gotten the short end for far too long. And you need to be prioritized in a big, big way. I'm just not sure your way is the right way. So that's the debate we have here tonight. Finally, I'm concerned with the comments made by some, again with good intentions, that by putting this measure alternative on the ballot, that we're sending somehow a negative signal to young people, you, that somehow your work did not really matter. And all of us up here, I know, because we're engaged in the business of politics, believe the exact opposite. For all of you who put in time to get these signatures to support kids, you are here tonight. You could be doing other things. No matter what happens, your voice, your time, and your passion are not being wasted. You are pushing an important narrative and cause forward. You are writing the story of how our city will come together in real time to support young people. And no one will ever take that away from you. And more importantly, no one is trying. What I am proposing is not exactly what you want, but it sure builds upon what you started. And it may not feel like it's right to you now, but we are trying and we are listening to you. I will not forget the young people in yellow t-shirts tonight. So however this turns out, the thing that is most important to me, and I know to my colleagues, is that you stay in this fight. Short termers and long timers. The short termers get discouraged when they get engaged and then never to be heard from again. The long timers decide they're going to dedicate their lives to the causes that they believe in. You must be long termers, all of you, for our city. Let's call the roll on the substitute motion, please.
Ashby.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Harris.
Hello.
Hanson.
I understand.
Chenier.
Hi.
Guerra.
Hi.
Jennings.
No.
Carr.
Yes.
And Steinberg.
No. Measure fails. 441. Now, on the main motion, to place the alternative on the ballot for November 2020, with the promises made in the April 14th date to come on back, please call the roll.
Thank you. And may I read into the record on Exhibit A to the Resolution, Section 3A, the correct date of the March election is March 3rd, 2020.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ashby.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on.
I want to clarify that the, because the motion was changed a few times. Just want to clarify. The stuff's the.
The main motion. I can describe it to you, or do you want to make her the motion?
The motion is, go ahead.
No, this is the main motion, to put my alternative on the November ballot, recognizing, as we've discussed here tonight, that we actually have many months to amend it as necessary, but with a firm commitment to come back April the 14th to workshop and begin setting up a decision-making process to potentially amend it. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Does that help? Okay, that's the main motion, but it is to put it on the ballot. Go ahead. Yes.
Ashby.
Still yes.
Warren.
Harris.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Chenier.
No.
Guerra.
Hi.
Jennings.
Hi.
Carr.
Yes.
And Steinberg.
Yes. That passes seven to two. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Thank you. April the 14th, be prepared to come back to City Hall, no matter what happens next week with Measure G. Thank you. Do we have a public comment on items not on the agenda?
We do. We have council comments before that.
Council comments and questions before that.
And Mr. Mayor may reach into the record, some board and commission appointments to the Sacramento Arts, Culture, and Creative Economy Commission. For District 1, Rick Gott. District 2, Dear Hair. District 4, Maya Wallace. District 5, Andrea Lepore. District 6, Azalea Perez. District 7, Donnie Blumstock. District 8, Luisa Lovolo. And Mayor's recommendations are Dr. Elwin, Dr. L, Stephen Winlock, Priscilla Enriquez, and Melinda Wilson Ramsey. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council ideas and questions. Councilman Carr.
Yes, this Saturday, we're having our final community meeting at the Pennell Center. It will start at nine o'clock. The program is going to be essentially what's been accomplished, what will be accomplished before I leave this seat, and what needs to be done in 2021. That's nine o'clock at the Samuel and Bonnie Pennell Community Center, a community meeting. Breakfast will be served.
Thank you very much, Councilman Carr. Councilman Jennings.
Thank you. Two announcements. One, we have tree planting at Conlon Park this Saturday, the 29th, at 9:00 a.m. It's an opportunity for you to come out and join us, volunteer your time and your services to help us plant trees at Conlon Park. And in order to do so, you can contact our office or contact our Parks Commissioner, Devin Lavell. And if that day doesn't work, we have another volunteer day for you. It's going to take place at Sojourner Truth Park. It's going to be on March the 7th, Saturday, March the 7th, at 9:00 a.m. as well. And this will be the opportunity to get our ballpark back in playing shape. So we're going to have all the tools and all the resources that are there, snacks, a little bit of food and drink. And again, our Parks Commissioner, Devin Lavell, and/or you can contact my office here at City Hall.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I had an interesting experience today in that I applied for a permit. I went through the planning and permit process to build an accessory dwelling unit at my home. What I found was a discrepancy between our planning crew and our building crew about whether or not a separate address is requisite for an ADU. Mr. Manager, I'd like to ask you to work with our planning staff and our building department to settle this controversy. We need to have certainty whether or not an extra address is actually required for an ADU. Furthermore, you know, I know that Public Safety asks for a separate address so that they can easily locate an address in question in case there's a mishap, a fire, some kind of unlawful activity. But there's differing opinions about this. And when you go to apply for a building permit, I feel that there should be certainty. So CDD says definitively that they do not require it, and yet Public Safety seems to be driving the boat here, but we need a policy moving forward.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Gedda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to invite everyone out to the annual Tahoe Elementary Pancake Breakfast. Always love our pancakes in Tahoe Park. This Saturday, February 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Tahoe Elementary Cafeteria. Join a good opportunity to have some fellowship with fellow neighbors.
Very good. Jay, Councilman Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to do an adjourned memory. Oak Park lost a matriarch. Her name was Ernestine Elaine Crump. She was, so Ms. Crump passed away. She was born to Ernest King and Vivian Vern Slaughter on May 24th, 1928, in Oakland, California. She was raised by her stepfather, Anderson Flynnoy Jr., senior. And at the age of 15, she went to live with her grandmother, Bertha Elebeck. At the age of 17, she met the love of her life, Harrison Earl Crump, senior. And on August 9th, 1945, they were married. She went to Sacramento High School. She went to Sacramento City College, where she received her degree as a licensed vocational nurse. She worked in the pediatric department at Mercy General Hospital for 20 years. Upon her retirement, she worked at the Bret Hart Elementary School, where my children Breakfast will be served.
Thank you very much, Councilman Carr. Councilman Jennings.
Thank you. Two announcements. One, we have tree planting at Conlon Park this Saturday, the 29th, at 9:00 a.m. It's an opportunity for you to come out and join us, volunteer your time and your services to help us plant trees at Conlon Park. And in order to do so, you can contact our office or contact our Parks Commissioner, Devin Lavell. And if that day doesn't work, we have another volunteer day for you. It's going to take place at Sojourner Truth Park. It's going to be on March 7, Saturday, March 7, at 9:00 a.m. as well. And this will be the opportunity to get our ballpark back in playing shape. So we're going to have all the tools and all the resources that are there, snacks, a little bit of food and drink. And again, our Parks Commissioner, Devin Lavell, and/or you can contact my office here at City Hall.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I had an interesting experience today in that I applied for a permit. I went through the planning and permit process to build an accessory dwelling unit at my home. What I found was a discrepancy between our planning crew and our building crew about whether or not a separate address is requisite for an ADU. Mr. Manager, I'd like to ask you to work with our planning staff and our building department to settle this controversy. We need to have certainty whether or not an extra address is actually required for an ADU.
It's not.
Furthermore, you know, I know that Public Safety asks for a separate address so that they can easily locate an address in question in case there's a mishap, a fire, some kind of unlawful activity. But there's differing opinions about this, and when you go to apply for a building permit, I feel that there should be certainty. So CDD says definitively that they do not require it, and yet Public Safety seems to be driving the boat here. But we need a policy moving forward.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to invite everyone out to the annual Tahoe Elementary Pancake Breakfast. Always love our pancakes in Tahoe Park. This Saturday, February 29, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Tahoe Elementary Cafeteria. Join a good opportunity to have some fellowship with fellow neighbors.
Very good. Jay, Councilman Shanir.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to do an adjourned memory. Oak Park lost a matriarch. Her name was Ernestine Elaine Crump. She was... So Ms. Crump passed away. She was born to Ernest King and Vivian Vern Slaughter on May 24, 1928, in Oakland, California. She was raised by her stepfather, Anderson Flannoy Jr. And at the age of 15, she went to live with her grandmother, Bertha Elebeck. At the age of 17, she met the love of her life, Harrison Earl Crump Sr., and on August 9, 1945, they were married. She went to Sacramento High School. She went to Sacramento City College, where she received her degree as a licensed vocational nurse. She worked in the pediatric department at Mercy General Hospital for 20 years. Upon her retirement, she worked at the Bret Hart Elementary School, where my children went, as a walking guard and yard duty aide, and as well with the after-school program. She did volunteering really throughout her senior years. She was blessed with over 113 grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and great-great-grandchildren.
113!
I want to say that again. 113. That deserves that. She is going to be missed. She always had a smile and a kind word, and I think it's appropriate, as we talk about bringing more resources to young people, that we honor her tonight because that was a main thrust of her life.
Unreal. Beautiful. Thank you. In her memory, Ms. Crump. How many people do we have?
I have 15 speakers signed up to speak. I'd bet some left already, so I'm going to call a few names. Diana Carion, Randy Knott, Mary Louise Blazovich.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I've submitted a petition reflecting concerns regarding the city's deviation from norms by granting approvals that should have led to a proactive public review as to how a landlocked parcel with no street access, 455 without, could be developed. Without due diligence and regardless of negative impacts on neighboring properties like value, health, and safety, privacy, and compatibility, the city plowed ahead approving construction incompatible with surrounding homes and requests for rarities such as septic system and propane. I'm requesting all construction halted while council investigates actions taken and not that led to the unusual parcel and land use decisions, lack of due diligence, and disregard for neighborhood input, options, and until there's agreeable resolution between the city and affected neighborhood. My property is immediately adjacent and 100% affected. I've been working to protect it since before construction began. This is serious to me and my future. Frustration is great and emotion raw. A spacious backyard is my joy. It's my sanctuary, allowing me freedom, healing, and connection to spirit, humanity, and the universe. I write, exercise, garden, and enjoy nature, always finding something to do in the space of mine, under the sky in my backyard. Now I step outside to a behemoth, peering into, towering over, and running almost the entire length of my property, blocking the sun and keeping up the 30% of my space in shade all day, including the organic vegetable garden I've grown for years for my well-being, peace of mind, and to share with family and friends. I've been in my home for over 30 years, paying taxes and contributing to society in many ways, as I still do. I've done everything expected of someone. I've been looking forward to a time that's my own and arranging things so that I can spend it aging in place and use the value of my property only if absolutely necessary. The city's actions made with complete disregard for my property and voice...
Ms. Carolyn, your time is complete.
Thank you, ma'am.
City manager, do you want someone...
City manager, Jasso will meet with you right now to talk about it, okay? Oh, go ahead, Alan.
My office has been looking into it, but I think if Mike Jasso can help tonight, we'd really like for him to look into the situation and see. So we've been working through the planning department and building department, but maybe the city manager can help.
I think what you're looking into is whether the current owners followed any processes and followed the procedures they were supposed to do. My question is not them. My question is the city.
Right, I understand, and that's why the city manager is going to talk to you now. Okay, thank you.
Randy Knott and then Mary Louise Blazovich.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Randy Knott. I'm representing the Francis Key Project. With me is Maria Espinoza with Guyeka, who is one of the wonderful contractors that we work with in the cannabis industry to remove hazardous waste. As children were the topic of discussion this evening, one of the most important things we can do is leave them a decent environment, a better one than they've come into, and I mean the physical environment. When I was working with the city and our team created the Office of Cannabis Policy and Enforcement, one of the things we did was the Neighborhood Responsibility Plan, which is the 1% of gross receipts that go to the city. We wanted to come with you today with a request to ask the mayor to direct the Law and Legislation Committee to look into an ordinance that would require storefront dispensaries to provide a receptacle for recycling vape cartridges and batteries. And I'm with Maria from Guyeka today because she supplies, she does this program in many cities across the state, and it is an immediate impact and a direct relationship to what our industry does in this community. And one of the reasons behind the Neighborhood Responsibility Plan was to find a way. We've actually been able to do the math, and for the 30 dispensaries that this collection box would be at, it would be less than 2% of that 1% of the Neighborhood Responsibility Plan. So not only would we be getting these out of the waste stream, getting them out of the garbage, getting them out of kids' hands, we would have an opportunity to recycle them. We also have another speaker, Shira Lane, from the atrium, who'll be coming up to talk about the carts for the arts program. So my ask tonight is that Chair Shanir, if you would consider bringing the item to Law &amp; Ledge. I've also spoken with Kimberly Cargill, the Director of a Therapeutic Alternative, and several other dispensaries throughout the area, not necessarily in the city limits, and she has the endorsement that if the dispensaries...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Okay, thanks anyway.
Next is Mary Louise Blazovich.
Just a second, Madam Clerk. Randy, on your way out, will you have a chat with Laney Milstein? She'd like to discuss this issue with you.
Sure. Thank you.
Mary Louise Blazovich, then Shira Lane, then Maria Espinoza.
My name is Maria Espinoza, and I represent Guyeka. We're a cannabis waste disposal company, and we primarily service California. We, I have created a program for Guyeka with the collection of vape pens. It's currently being utilized by private companies, and I would like the city of Sacramento to be the first in putting a sustainability program for these vapes. People are not aware of how dangerous they are, how reactive these pens are. They normally end up in landfill or in the black market. Again, as popular as they are now, not a lot of people know how to manage them properly. And Guyeka has a full recycling program that turns these pens into powder that is utilized in the airline and the defense industry. So instead of populating landfills or them going back in the black market for reuse, we'd like a full circular program to make sure that they're used for other purposes.
Thank you. Shira Lane, then Kevin Robinson, then McWorthy.
Hopefully that will stay on for a bit. There we go. Yay. Hi, my name is Shira Lane. I run the atrium, which is a creative innovation center for sustainability. Two of my members came up to me and said, "We have a serious problem on our hands. There are cartridges that are being made right now, and we're all about sustainability. We're not for or against cannabis or anything." I'm talking about the device and the waste that it creates. Right now, they're called disposables, which means you use them and dispose of them. Not true. You have a lithium-ion battery here, and then you have a cartridge here which has the cannabis oil, which is considered cannabis hazardous waste. Because it's attached and you can't detach them very easily, you can't give them to a recycler to take care of the lithium-ion battery, and you can't give them to a waste person because they have the cannabis waste. You have to have somebody that is capable of taking care of both of them and separating them. So we created, oh, sorry. So we created carts for the arts to eliminate this problem. We created an art exhibit with all these cartridges. We actually got international recognition. We were featured in Reuters. Our Sacramento artists were featured in Reuters and in Pakistan. We actually got a large manufacturer, Jupiter, to change the name so they're no longer calling it disposable. They're going to be calling it single-use on all of their marketing, which is a very big win. Also, what we have done, they have promised us to redesign it so that it will completely be taken apart and made of secondary materials that can be recycled. We would like to be part of educating our consumers, people that use cannabis, people that use vape cartridges, and the dispensaries, because people, the dispensaries are telling people that these are disposable, and they're not. They're one of the leading causes of fires in trash trucks, and what caused the fire down in Southern California. So we are all about sustainability, and we would like to help with this cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kevin Robinson, then McWorthy, then Raul Huerta.
Hello, my name is Kevin Robinson. I live in Historic Wind Park in the 4th District. This tree is on our property line. The city issued a permit to the owner of the adjacent house to remove this private protected tree. This is at least 115-year-old oak tree. The permit was issued, again, by the city. We went through the appeal process. We had to pay $300 to go through the appeal process. At the end of the appeal process, we were told that it was binding, that nothing could be done. This tree provides so much canopy to us that we are at a position where if this tree is removed, it will cost us thousands of dollars in installing a thermal barrier, insulation, and ongoing increased heating and cooling costs for electricity, or we have to spend thousands of dollars to try and get an injunction on this. So a permit was issued by the city on a boundary tree. The code states that both conjoined, or I don't know the word, is, both property owners have to agree to this, and the city issued the permit even though they didn't take the time to even evaluate the property line. They, as a parcel viewer, anybody who's looked at a parcel viewer, I apologize, can see that it's 72 feet from the center of the alley is the end of our property line. And the city did not request a survey, and they did not give us any redress other than the examiner's decision is binding, and we'd like to ask to have a conference with the city manager to see if there is some way that we can address this.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Hanson would like to address it.
Kevin, thank you for coming. My staff, and because of your email, we started working on this last week, and I'm glad you're here. One of the things I'd like to ask the city manager, we also have Assistant City Manager Hector Barone, who oversees Public Works, where urban forestry is in the back, is, one, I think to ensure that the permit that was approved is halted until this can be resolved, because I think the permit is active, and I think that that is the first thing. Second, I believe that the appeal amount should be refunded to Mr. Robinson. Third, I think we need the city attorney's office to go back and figure out how we fix the appeal process to ensure that these situations don't happen. The tree is clearly on your property, even though it abuts the adjacent property. I know that I would be so furious if a neighbor applied for a tree removal permit for a tree on my property. I didn't know about it. I had to appeal it. I had to pay to appeal it, and then it was granted after I appealed it. And so I think you're absolutely righteous. I think the city screwed this up from everything I know so far. And Mr. City Manager, I'd just like you to work with Mr. Barone and his team to try to right the ship and then to fix the process to make sure that due process is granted in this particular case, because the tree is a property, right? I mean, this is a very important part of your property, and I think the damage that would be caused by removing it without fair process is really important. So thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for giving us a chance to fix this. And Mr. City Manager, I don't know if you want to say something, but...
Yeah, so Mr. Barone is just coming in. Maybe we can connect and figure out how we can meet together, talk through this issue.
And just the last thing is, I'd like an update as soon as possible from city staff on what the fix is. And Mr. Robinson, to the extent that you want to communicate and let me know the status as well, I would appreciate both sides. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson.
Next speaker is McWorthy, then Raul Huerta.
That's amazing. You know, nobody recognized that what you're saying here, youth enrichment, Dale Robinson had something for many, many years, but he got out of it, and we're getting more and more close to who pushed that. Now, we've got to understand here, why did this measure come on? People vote for Measure G. Now, we see the economic downturn. This is what you should be trying to educate people in Northern California. If you don't vote Donald Trump back in, this thing going to be the shits, people, all over, especially California. The advantage of it is voting back in, and we know the money will be there. If you don't, nobody else in America can handle America's business where Donald Trump... He's not a politician. He's a businessman. So people, especially black folks, if you want to get over, you better vote for Donald Trump. Other than that, you will still continue to have a program, a program. Now, Measure U, that was part of my language of AMOC, and they said, "Well, we prefer to get the percentage." Oh, that's the same thing as AMOC. You don't have to come back each year and beg nobody to fund you. I've been helping babies ever since I've been here. I gave work programs, get out of high school. I set up resumes to help babies get jobs. Black folks, Hispanic people, do something for yourself, because this thing in California wants the sanctuary cities go to court. They don't support no constitution, so you cannot stand up and say, "Well, this is based on American Constitution." But we will get the facts out of Washington, D.C. We will get the facts out of Washington, D.C., that puts sanctions on them financially wise when they ignore the United States Constitution.
Next speaker is Raul Huerta, senior, then Raul, junior, then Jasmine Cuzada.
Good evening, councilmembers. As many of you know already, on February 11, the Twin Rivers Unified School District unanimously voted to approve Resolution 809 opposing the proposal by Councilmember Harris to place a transitional homeless shelter directly
But I can say this, that the mayor and I have tried to schedule a meeting with Mr. Martinez, and we hope to be successful soon.
Next speaker is Jasmine Quisada, then Twikonda Strain.
Hello. Hello, my name is Jasmine Quisada. I want to say that I'm very proud of my mom and dad. They have two jobs and work so hard to take care of me and my brothers. My family and I are worried about my little brother. He goes to Garden Valley Elementary School. He walks and comes back home by himself because my parents have to work. If the city decides to put the transitional cabins, my brother will not feel safe, and we won't either. I'm so happy that Garden Valley teachers and the principal agreed with us that a shelter does not belong in front of our school. Please keep me and my family safe. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. The next speaker is Twikonda Strain, then Audrey Sarber. Twikonda, Audrey Sarber. Following Audrey is Glenn. And then Falcon Lee.
Thank you all for your hard work today. I know you have a lot on the agenda. I know I'm not standing in front of the microphone too closely, but I'm cool. I'm pretty loud anyway, and everyone can hear me. This podium still isn't ADA compliant. I mean, I said that earlier. So I'm actually just going to step away from it to highlight the fact that this is an obnoxious place to stand. Can I stand here? I don't get a microphone. I have a really high-pitched voice, and I don't like my amplified voice. I have a breathing problem. I'm disabled, and part of my disability has to do with my voice. And that's why I don't like to stand right here, where all these people have touched everything. And I don't want to touch the dais, and I don't want to be unnecessarily amplified. But yes, this honestly, it needs to be fixed. These young people that were here today, they were very intimidated. I could tell. Because I saw other people, adults, up here that are intimidated unnecessarily. This whole process is unnecessarily hostile, right? I also have a light sensitivity issue. It's fine for the light to be bright up there where you guys are, because you need to stay awake, right? I mean, we know everyone wants to go to sleep and eat dinner. But it doesn't need to be this bright right here, you know? It makes me feel nervous. And I wasn't nervous just 10 seconds ago. I was fine. And now I'm here, and I'm nervous for no reason. You guys are just my peers, really, you know? And so I'm here again as a shelter advocate, unlike some people who have come here for years, whose work I appreciate. I'm not here to make demands. I'm really here to highlight the fact that, you know, we're still at the same crossroads. We've been out for years. We have an opportunity to show the rest of the state, because of Steinberg's, you know, unique position as Commissioner on Homelessness, we have an opportunity to show people that we can be open-minded and that we can accept creative, you know, solutions. We don't need to put transitional places in front of elementary schools. I didn't even know that was going on, even though I would advocate for... Steinberg said he's good on his word, right? He asked all of you to find places in your districts to put whatever it is.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Two-minute shelter. That's a really fast two minutes. Also, the two-minute thing is hostile.
My next speaker is Glenn, then Falcon Lee, and Janice Suzette Andrews.
You need new, unique solutions. You guys are the most close-minded people in this whole town.
Councilmembers who are here, I am standing here to encourage you to pass a law or some type of reason, or I'm not even too sure what the word is here. But we cannot allow hate or lies to be given toward candidates. My... The newspaper quoted a candidate who said, "But I don't know who these people are," who wrote a lie about another candidate. And yet, this morning, I watched a late teenager man go and hang more of these very lying things about the other candidate. So there must be no law to stop that person from having it done. Just saying you don't know who is doing it isn't enough. You've got to do something, and there has to be a law against allowing it. Just saying, "I don't know," well, hell. It's going to be done every day until after the election? It should be stopped as soon as it is done. And hate should not be allowed either. My poster for a candidate was torn up and left on my steps to make a statement about, "I don't like those kinds of people who are running for a public office." It should be against the law. And I am encouraging all of you to talk and to pass a law to make it illegal. It is important. Otherwise, the best candidates may not be elected because lies are allowed and hate is allowed.
Thank you for your comment. Your time is complete.
That poster was left on my steps, and it still is there.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Falcon Lee.
That was me.
Okay, thank you. Janice Suzette Andrews. I don't see Janice or Glenn. Okay, Vice Mayor Harris, I have no more speakers.
All right. We've already had counsel comment. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you, everybody, for taking your time to come to City Council. We are adjourned.